Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present.
Commissioner Reiser.
Present.
Commissioner Huguen.
Present.
Commissioner Chag, present. Commissioner Culberson.
Present. All right, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Uh, is there anyone that would like to, uh, change or add anything to the agenda?
Oh, um, I would love to propose that we, um, that we rearrange our agenda to, um, have reports done and then the minutes or vice versa, minutes and then reports. And with our training presentation, Mr. Rouenbe last because that's where a lot of our time is going to just been imagined. We don't want to have to interrupt that to be able to, and these are pretty, um, I don't see.
Um, I'd also like to add after, um, the training and discussion, we, you know, sort of open it up for a couple of comment questions at that time. So.
So.
Sorry, sorry.
So we would do, um, public comment, then reports or, or in minutes, then communications correspondence. We don't have a public hearing. We do our training and then open it up again for public comment questions and, um, then adjournment.
Is this for tonight or is this generally?
Tonight, just tonight, just tonight.
I don't know if this is a point of order thing, but is, is there a way we could just have that?
Yeah, it's got some feedback on it.
It's just, uh, we just need the volume turned down on that. I can come figure it out. I don't want to touch it.
Yeah, I don't want to.
We'll do that.
Okay, we will do that.
I'll just.
Yeah, it's the volume on the, on the computer itself.
There it is.
Does your public hearing schedule for tonight?
So as I understand it, today's meeting, we have no projects before us, so no public hearing, um, no presentations from, from owners or, um, developers. So we have our reports, our usual reports, minutes from, uh, the meeting of November twenty eighth to approve. Um, and then, uh, presentation by Mr. Rouenbe, our training. And, um, Jan is recommending a, we put public comment at the end of the training.
Yeah, just so there are questions, uh, from the public.
I would support, uh, combine the proposals.
Same here.
All right. Great. Okay, so we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Although in favor of, uh, amending the agenda as proposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're looking forward with our amended agenda. So next will be public comment. Anyone?
Yes, we have two of them up.
All right.
First one is Pam Boyd. Pam, uh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Pam Boyd, Desire Resident. Yay, this is the last meeting of the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam.
And, uh, we have, um, Rob Pattinson. Uh, Mr. Pattinson, you have the floor.
If anyone present that would like to make public comment at this time?
Good God.
No, you invited me. We're supposed to have it before the planning commission, so, our meeting.
Yay, thank you for coming, Jill.
All right, um, then, uh, entertain a motion to close public comment.
So.
Support, um, moved by.
Reiser.
Reiser and sought by Hyde. Uh, any further discussion? Although in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, close public comment at seven oh seven. Um, moving on to, um, reports. Then we have, um, let's see, planning. Anyone want to talk briefly about, um, submissions?
Yeah, there's, there have been, uh, we're getting a little slow spot here before the holidays. Um, there have been no real significant, uh, development submissions at this point. Um, so there's not a lot to report. Haven't, have had almost no pre-application meetings, so we're gonna have a little slow part here before the holidays, but I can do, uh, you know, some other ones.
Uh, we did have the pre-applications meeting with the, um, Quality Sixteen Yokes. No, it wasn't, it was, yeah.
Yeah, well, the, the, um, well, technically pre-application, but we, we met with the, uh, folks that are proposing and, uh, some changes with the Quality Sixteen. You, as you remember, there was a proposal to do kind of an office, uh, self-storage facility to kind of take place in the, um, Quality Sixteen movie theater. That was not, uh, received well by the township, um, and decided to go back to drawing board and try to figure out something else. They, uh, are going to be approaching us with a, uh, amendment to their PUD to allow, um, a mixture, possible mixture of uses. At this point, they don't have a specific developer or use, uh, on hook. And so they are desiring to allow amendment to the PUD to include a number of uses. And if those, if that list, and there's some other conditions, um, if that, if that list is acceptable, then they would market that property to folks and then, uh, submit a plan at that point, you know, a detailed, a detailed plan at that point. But, um, what they do know is that they, they don't believe they can make the goal of it as a movie theater. So they want to do something else with property. They want to market it. Right now, they don't have anybody in hand, but they can't write this as a movie theater. Right now, that's the only thing that it could be. So that's what they're proposing.
So, so, uh, we just take their word, word for that? I mean, I used to go to Quality Sixteen quite frequently. And I don't think I was the only one, but, so we, do we just take their word for that? That was a great community episode.
Yeah, I, you, during the review process, you could sort of ask that question. To provide additional information on why that particular use could be.
Commissioner Hyde.
Could you refresh my memory? Um, do they have, does the PUD have to be approved by co-users of the PUD? Meaning, I thought there were three, three sections of, if I'm remembering right. There's multiple sections in the PUD and they all had to agree if one of them changed, or my thinking.
It's a condo, yeah. Aren't they condoized? Because then the other condo, um, parcels need to approve.
This isn't a typical PUD as I recall, but I don't recall the detail now. But if they needed to have this, I just didn't want them to go to all that effort and then have somebody turn it down that isn't us. What's its owner now? I'm looking at a zoning map.
It's a PUD.
It's a PUD.
Okay. But it, is it a condominium?
If I remember right, they had, there were just multiple parcels and the other owner with the condominium, all the proves that, because that came up.
There are three. Have to have three.
There are three, there are three parcels. I don't know if that's exactly.
Okay, so, we had it bad.
It was, I, I heard that term too, like commercials.
I remember that, but I don't, it isn't my memory that matters, it's what is. So as long as it may be whatever that is, that's fine. When they come back.
Any other questions? Um, and then where are we thinking for PUD and some of the other ordinance revisions?
We're hoping to have the PUD back in front of you in January. It'll be the first meeting in January.
All right.
There we did.
Um, any, do you want to, fire, we, Bob, do you want to do yours altogether?
Yeah, so maybe it'll be real, there's only one that I can report on. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board, I believe tomorrow night will be, uh, defunct and it'll be combined with TAP. But I'm not positive that that's a given. I think it's on the agenda and it's definitely what they've talked about. Um, so we'll see tomorrow night, but we have not met since our last meeting. And neither have I met with, um, Huron River Watership Council. However, the, uh, Fire Department Guidance Committee has been meeting every week and we're getting closer to reporting back to trustees and, um, does that come through here? I mean, we're just, we're just.
Participating.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you're representing the.
Okay, so anyway.
The best knowledge.
We're going to be writing a report, yeah, vast knowledge. And we've got David Reed on there who's past, uh, vast knowledge is, has appreciated it. We have a lot of good people on there. So all I can say is, uh, we're getting close to finishing the draft report. We may Wednesday finalize it. That's our goal. It needs to be done.
Huron River Watership Council?
No, that we haven't met on. This is the Fire Services Guidance.
Oh.
Let's skip right over. Because they had nothing to report on. So, uh, that'll be, this week, we report in January. We have to get the reports to the trustees so they can review it before January's, um, meeting is at thirteen, I think is on the calendar. But anyways, early January, present to the trustees and the public what, what we found, what we're recommending. And then they may or may not make decisions that night, that day. Let's see. But there is a, a lot of need for improvement in our support for our fire services. That's the bottom line. There are different ways to go about it and there are differences in opinion. Things are good that we're getting it all out there. Questions?
Anything from DDA?
They don't meet again until January.
That was.
I, I think Commissioner Hyde just mentioned it. We did abolish our last meeting, the committee, and I, I'm going to, I'm going to assume we're going to, uh, combine with Parks, Rec, and Preserving Advisory Board. I think they call it PPP, Parks, Pathways and Preserves.
Or it might be Preserves, Pathway, I don't know what.
Yeah.
Pathways and Preserves.
So I think we might be coming back in January, but I'll leave that up to the trustees, I think, to make the ultimate decision.
So do they have, are, do those involve special melages, special assessments, those two?
Pathways.
It's all one, is it? Source.
Well, pathways and preserves, the land, but that's really land preservation.
But LPC.
Well, no, that's LPC.
Right.
LPC purchases for the township, the properties.
But there's also another village.
And then there's the parks, um, and pathways to develop the properties into parks or to add pathways to, you know, et cetera. So I don't think that there's a certain.
There's two separate, those are really two separate melages.
The scope of those is clear that there's, does it get kind of fuzzy sometimes or no? No, I mean, LPC buy, purchases and parks and preser, and pathways makes use of the properties and uses the money from the. Administrators or develops, so to speak? Okay. Well, then it was.
I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about it now, but, um, we did meet with, uh, Jessica Flintoff to talk about Bus Village, uh, myself, Commissioner Moore, and Commissioner Culberson. Um, and it was, this PPP combination was brought up and, uh, it was also mentioned that there's not really, uh, transportation island, this new PPP group. And, um, and Jess was thinking that perhaps there could be a, uh, transportation consolidation group. Uh, not really any further other than just thoughts about that, but something that I think that would probably come out of the ending TAP is that there would be a broader transportation group to handle the, uh, the pathways portion of that.
It was interesting. I did, um, uh, have a chance to talk to a couple of other jurisdictions and, uh, one of the way, one of the divisions that they do is they have, you know, the pathways being more recreational stuff, that anything in the right-of-way or dealing with public transit. So public, you know, in the right-of-way is, is sort of how they divide those, um, different groups. And there's definitely, I mean, right now, there's a lot of funding available, you know, for different activities in the right-of-ways as well as some of the, um, more recreation-oriented pathways. So that would just needs to be something SIO really thinks about because, um, you know, as, as we talk about, um, density, Jackson Road, all those things and public transit, in, in, you know, it's, I think it's great that Commissioner Moore is on way. Um, we, we sort of need, we're missing that link, I think, in the, in the township. And that would be, you know, because we have Watts, Semcog, you know, all of those folks deal with, um, you know, transportation. And having a more active group might benefit the township. So.
So what are, what are the right-of-way, what's that?
Oh, in a right-of-way, meaning it, it, it's within streets. So all streets have a right-of-way. And so your sidewalks, your public transportation, your, um, you know, if you did anything in the, uh, bike lanes. Yeah, pedestrian crossings, all of that stuff. Yeah, and, and it interface with the road commission, that kind of thing. Yeah.
We have to watch, I, I don't have to watch and you don't have to watch, but somebody has to watch that the proper funds, I mean, the funds are used properly. There we go. So, you know, LPC obviously wouldn't fund a pathway. They, they purchase property and Parks and Preserves and Pathways has to make use of the funds that were voted on and they can't be used for anything other than what was in the language of the ballot.
A village, yeah.
And if it goes above and beyond that and there's other ways to get money for other, from other sources, that'd be great.
Okay, then, um, we don't have any of, our engineers, I told them we didn't bring them tonight. Um, but I did want to, um, no ZB, we haven't met, we're meeting, um, this Thursday. Um, we did have training. Um, and then, uh, Environmental Sustainability Task Force were, um, we met, we agreed on a format for the plan. Um, and the goal is to have, uh, sort of the strategies and actions draft ready, um, in January and then, uh, something larger, uh, at the beginning of February that we can get even more public input on, um, and then recommend it to PC. And I, I think that, um, we've had discussions, the trustees have indicated an interest in also, um, being an approval body on that piece. And that is referenced in our master plan. So it, it would be, um, you know, it's important that, I think, we take a good look at that. Um, so that's where we are with that. Any other?
Can we skip Board of Trustees?
Oh, Board of Trustees, sorry, John.
Well, Jillian. Uh, we had a special meeting, six hours, on, uh, a couple Saturdays ago where we talked about some issues newsletter and we talked about finance director a little bit and we talked about hiring an interim administrator and, I don't know, it was a kind of a long meeting and, uh, some necessary discussions were had. We didn't take any votes, but tomorrow we're gonna be, uh, bringing someone up to introduce to the people that were interested in potentially hiring, bringing on as an interim administrator. His name is Mark Thompson. Mark has a lot of municipal experience, uh, in Ohio with cities and villages. He kind of helped out Frazier, the city of Frazier, when they had a contentious board and kind of helped them turn things around. He also was, I think, HR in the city of Ann Arbor for six months. So he's gonna come and people will be able to meet him and he'll talk a little bit, I think, give an intro. Um, so we could potentially bring him on. Um, I can go to the agenda if you want to hear more, but that'll be one of the highlights. And then, uh, you know, kind of, he'll, if, if he's, if the board elects to, uh, bring him on, then he'll be transitioning into the role that Jim Murdy currently plays.
Great. Progress, movement. And that, you, are you also looking at a finance director?
Um, not tomorrow, but that, uh, we're looking to do that in the future. And then the tension there is, uh, how's the, the responsibility and the reporting gonna go? And there's, you know, there's no secret that there's a split in, uh, to whom that person should report and how. So that, that's, that's, uh, that came up at the, uh, Saturday, uh, special meeting. Anything else, Jillian?
It was a long meeting. Um, we, we have a packed, um, agenda for tomorrow as well. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll also be going into a, um, not a breakout room, but executive session or closed session for, uh, update on the Gelman. And if you follow the card meeting or the SIO for Safe Water, you know, you, you learned that there are some, uh, higher levels found in lakes or in Ann Arbor, in, in, in a well in Ann Arbor Township as it gets closer to the Huron River. So I don't know if you followed the card, Bob, I know you do.
All right, thank you. The other thing I'd like to bring up, um, from the chair's report is when we, we do have, um, a representative for the LPC that, um, Jackie was, um, our LPC representative. So I don't know if there's someone who might have an interest in that, um, but we should have our, our representative solidified. And someone's pointing at John. Are you a trustee representative on LPC?
Not yet.
Not yet, but you may be.
So we need young.
Okay, but I mean, you'd be, or.
I don't want to take anything away from John.
No, I mean, John's got a big.
No, 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 so Will has nominated me or, you know, Supervisor Hathaway has nominated me as the trustee's, uh, representative on the LPC because of the interaction between land use with respect to what LPC does and, and what the planning commission does, that, that relationship. So it'll be up to my fellow trustees as to whether, I assume they're all.
Okay, so we'll just wait on that because that, it was also here when Jackie was the trustee.
Right, right.
So we'll just wait on that. The other one was, um, it's a new year, this is our last meeting, um, the rotation for pre-app meetings. Um, I was just going to, i- i- unless someone had, um, a specific month they weren't going to be here or a specific month that would, it was hard for them to, um, participate with those meetings. There is the option of doing Zoom, um, with them, so you don't necessarily have to be present. Um, right, yeah. Um, you just have to make sure you, that people know. So is there anyone that has any conflicts, uh, coming up for the whole year of 2023? They're usually on Monday or Thursday after.
Tuesdays.
Tuesday or Thursday afternoons. Um, and they're scheduled at one fifteen or three fifteen. And we rotate just to give.
Yeah, every day I'm busy on those. I mean, I work.
Yeah, you work, yeah. So.
Put me down for busy.
We could, we could, okay, we won't excuse.
I, I could take time off, I could take leave, but, yeah.
Um, does anyone have a, a problem with it?
So I did, I just need to say, I did not know I was assigned for the month of December. So I think it would be helpful if commissioners knew what months they were assigned.
Yeah.
Until I got an email a couple of days ago asking me to go to December fifteenth.
Yeah, I think at the beginning of last year, we sort of did the rotation, but then we forget.
Yeah, 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 I get it.
So we should probably announce at the beginning who's, who's.
You could just send me a little email, say, these are your months, Kim.
What was it that we're doing? I didn't follow.
Pre-application meetings.
Pre-application meetings.
Before.
There's a.
Go ahead.
Don't mean anything to me, sorry.
There's a requirement in our, in our site plan process that a formal, uh, formal step of the process is that a developer meet with, um, myself, township engineer, a member of the planning commission. Uh, we invite the road commission, the drain commission, the health department, they don't normally show up unless it's a controversial project, and our utilities director and fire department. So we have a, what we call pre-application meeting and developer will show up with a concept. Sometimes it's detailed, sometimes it's not so detailed. And we will go through, uh, what the developer, uh, you know, what requirements that they'll have to meet, what each, what each of the departments are going to be looking for. You know, the fire department will talk about fire access. DPW will talk about utilities and water and sewer and things they're looking at. Engineer will talk about storm warning detention. I kind of talk about the process. I'll tell them what steps are going to have to go through. If there's a, if it's a special land use or rezoning or variance is required, kind of let them know upfront what the processes are gonna be. And then you as planning commission provide some input on, you know, your view as a planning commission for other projects. And so, and we do these for every project. I've been doing it, it was instituted into the site planning process probably fifteen years ago. And we do, what, two, two months a year? Each person?
Possibly.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Summertime's our best for me.
Okay.
May, June, July.
We can have you do a run.
Yeah, I'll do two months of it.
May, June, July are best for you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other one, any other folks?
I'm gonna have to give back this year.
I don't.
I'm working up on a vacation. I have no idea yet.
Oh, that's okay. You can, we can always, you can always exchange. What I ask is if you can't make a meeting, yeah, try and find someone who can, so.
I can do it. I would just have to take some lean.
Yeah, that's not, that's not too good. And Chris, you.
Same way.
Same way. Hmm, would you prefer not or?
I, you know, when it's only once every, you know, six months or something, I, I can think it works, so it's.
Maybe. Yeah, especially if it's virtual.
Yeah.
Where, I think.
So how do we participate virtually?
We, if, if we have.
It's really a conference room.
Well, if we have a virtual, if we have a desire to do it virtually, we do it here.
Okay.
And we just, like, you know, we do this, cameras, cameras and stuff. And whoever can be here in person, they show up in person. Whoever can be on Zoom, they show up, that's it. If it's all in person, which most of them are in person, we do it in the, for the, so. But we've been kind of playing. But we've been kinda playing that by ear the last couple months if people are more comfortable. Soon we do it on Zoom, so, just kind of, kind of play it by ear.
All right.
They enjoy it.
They enjoy it. All right. I'm taking orders. Okay, great, all right, thank you very much. And, um, with that, we'll move on to minutes. Any additions or revisions to minutes? Yes, Commissioner Hyde.
I had a question on the draft minutes on P13, but it doesn't matter, it's the last page of the minutes, where they talked about, um, the conditions that we asked for, um, and it says conditioned upon the applicant using embodied concrete. Isn't that supposed to say?
Embodied car, low embodied.
Low embodied, carbon.
Concrete, yes.
Okay.
What paragraph was it in?
Um.
Oh, I see, that's great.
It's above reports, just a little, so. Low embodied, carbon concrete. Other than that, it's just like being at the meeting, you can see what's going on just by reading.
Yes, Commissioner.
I didn't think we conditioned it upon that, but.
We gave them two choices.
Right.
Yeah.
And it does say that here.
Right.
Or ultimately, yeah.
Yeah, we gave them A or B.
Thank you.
Um, the only other one, uh, and I'd be interested in your opinion of it. The, um, where we gave them the option of, um, the LEED certification or Energy Star certification for the DOE, um, um, and I don't have a lot there, but the, the DOE, um, net zero ready. It says for, and there, it, it should, I'm wondering if it should say and or for because that Energy Star certification, um, can be separate from the DOE net zero ready. But the intent was that it would be Energy Star certification, you know, for that, meaning they would be getting the DOE net zero ready certification. Um, that, that, they would meet the criteria for that, which includes Energy Star certification. And that's what you get, like, seventy-five hundred, I, it's, it's a substantial amount of money per unit when you do that.
So where is that again?
Page three of the.
Yeah, where it says for, yeah, so thanks, because my computer's being very slow. It says, um, uh, let's see, no. Yeah, with the motion. Do you have the motion?
Oh, okay. I think that's bad, because that's too long.
Yeah, so, uh, the, the, it, it, I, I'm pretty sure I said for that, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure that was clear enough that we meant that it would be, um. Yeah, this is.
We pointed it out that it would be a creator tax benefit for Energy Star certification and the LEED certification.
Yeah.
What's the page you're looking?
That's on seven.
Seven. I appreciate you asking us, by the way, I'm just through the system. My computer's just. Um, okay.
So.
Oh, but it was in the motion.
I'm looking for it.
Which would be eight?
You're bulling. Yeah, well. Motion.
Yeah, it's in the motion, so what is it exactly, are you proposing changing your motion?
Where's that, oh, this is seven, okay.
Here you go, I'm sorry. Is this the one, the motion? Hold it, right.
Okay, it says, it's number five in the motion. It says LEED or Energy Star certification for the duplex, for the duplexes for DOE, um, zero energy ready homes. Um, and the Energy Star certification, um, i- is, um, uh, can be done separately, but the intent was that it would be the DOE net zero energy home, ready homes with Energy Star certification. So I don't know if that's clear enough about what the requirement is.
How would you like the language to read, to make it clear?
So the intent was both?
Yeah, because Energy Star certification is required for DOE net zero energy homes, so. But you can also get it separately, you don't have to do the net zero ready, so, um.
Do we need to just insert a both, the word both?
Well, it says for, LEED or.
It says for, yeah, LEED or is fine, it's just the for, um.
For both?
You know, I think it's okay, because it's for, it says Energy Star certification for the duplex, uh, uh, and for DOE, um.
Yep.
Uh, uh, and it should be net zero energy. And I think that's okay because it's saying what it's for.
Right.
And it's clear that it's that group, yeah. Okay, I think we're good with that.
So you wanna add net, net zero?
It should be net zero.
Okay.
Low embodied carbon concrete and net.
Do you see that it gets into the minutes, Chris, or you?
Um.
I'm taking notes, so.
Yeah.
Both motions, so. Okay, it's a good, it's a good question, I didn't.
Yeah, we should, because we should check the, actually, that's a good question of, of, uh, we need to get, we need to. Do you ever get the final?
No.
Yeah, okay, we need to do that.
And it goes to the trustees, so I guess, John, just make sure it's covered when it comes up before you, whenever that is. It's gonna be a little while, though.
Yeah, right.
There's a few things that has to.
Okay, we need a process where we're checking the final minutes.
So now what we're doing here?
We are, but, I mean, the actual minutes is they're corrected.
Oh, I see, I see.
And so that should be, Chris and I should do that, both of us should do that, what he said. Okay, good, um, so then, um, uh, entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Moved by Commissioner Hyde.
Second.
Support by Commissioner Moore. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Then we'll go on to our screening and discussion.
Excuse me, Jan?
Yes.
I'm on the road advisory committee.
Oh, yes.
And you have that as one of your reports.
Right, because Rakesh wasn't here, uh-huh.
Yeah, and he doesn't, he misses a lot.
Okay.
So I have to report to the board, so would you like a copy of that? I just, it's in.
Oh, that'd be great.
I can just.
Just email it.
Yeah, and we have the first Wednesday of the month, so I can just, um, scoot that over to you.
Include that, and we can include it as a written report for us. Wonderful, thanks.
Is there anything, you know, that you wanna share right now?
Any hot button issues that you?
The Townshipwide Road SAD is coming up for, uh, well, the, the road, um, funding is coming up for renewal in 2023. So right now, we're finishing up the, the projects that were listed, the improvements. We have a few, Park Road, um, the, the developer for Trailwoods, I think it's the same developer, had an agreement with the, the road commission to pave from Stabler up to the entrance of, um, I think it's Country French or.
Arbor, Arbor, Arbor and Country French.
Yeah.
We're gonna take it paved until there, and then people are gonna speed through those residential neighborhoods to get off of their roads.
Yes, that's basically, right, so that's what we're.
But that's.
Well, they're doing, yeah, they're doing that now.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So we're, uh, it's in front of us to figure out what to do with that part because they did not improve it over the 10 years of the SAD, so, yeah. We'll be figuring that out, we had some, some, um, uh, lots of emails right before that. We also are, who's the other, so Park Road was another, we're, we're revising the policies for special assessment districts. And that's been, we've been doing that for a year now, so I don't, I couldn't tell you when it's gonna be finished, but hopefully soon. Got it?
Thank you.
So I need to check in with Rakesh to see if he can maintain that commitment or not. But thank you for, at least a written report would be great.
We'll try DDA with him.
You'll switch?
Yeah, yeah, I'm more interested in roads.
Okay.
Would they leave over?
What's that?
Is there any group left open if he takes that?
Um, then, well, it would depend if, uh, yeah, if Rakesh could take DDA. But then, we're, we're also waiting for a determination whether we're a voting member of DDA or if we're just a, you know, um.
An observer.
An observer, yeah, so that's, we needed a determination on that, didn't we? Okay, so now we'll move on, sorry.
No, no problem.
All right.
So, um, hello, everybody, thanks for letting me sit up with you. I think it'd be, I didn't wanna talk behind everyone from my normal perch, um, back on the dais there. Um, maybe someday we'll be back at the dais, whatever. Um, you know, it'd be nice. Um, so a couple things we're gonna talk about tonight, I've got a little PowerPoint presentation, but uh, this started as, you know, just kind of a little, you know, we didn't have a meeting today, like, tonight typically because there was, there's no agenda items, so we're gonna cancel the meeting. But we were gonna do a little training for some of the planning commissioners that are new, relatively new, or just wanted some additional training. And then we decided to, it's, it's kind of an orientation, I should say, which is gonna happen before the planning commission meeting. But since we didn't have any items on the planning commission meeting, we thought it was a good opportunity to maybe do a little bit more than just an orientation, and talk a little bit more about, um, kind of roles and responsibilities of planning commissioners and some of the things you're supposed to be doing, maybe some of the things you're not supposed to be doing, um, and, uh, you know, kinda go from there. Just, and because it's just us, you know, and, and the public, I don't know if the public caught this, but at, at the end, when we're done with the presentation, we're gonna open this up for public comment as well. So if you guys have any, anything that comes up as we're discussing, uh, you know, feel free, I'll jump back up there and be able to man the Zoom meeting when this is, when I'm done giving this presentation. Um, so as we go, just feel free to, there's a small group, just feel free to jump in. Um, the, the PowerPoint presentation I have, it's not very long, and hopefully it'll just generate some discussion. But it, it's, uh, much of it, I'll get, I have to give credit to the, um, uh, Michigan Association of Planning because I, some, I, I am a trainer for Michigan Association of Planning, and I do a version of what I'm gonna show you. It's, it's not as long because the MAP training is four hours, and I don't think we're gonna be here for four hours.
Blue for sure.
And, uh, I've done that training for as many as like, you know, 50 to 100 people. So this is a much smaller, obviously a much smaller group, and if you have any questions at all, just stop me and we'll try to, try to address those as we go.
Yeah, one thing, and actually, this is available for the trustees too. We have some, um, planning commission educational material that you can sign out. Um, and I think Jeff has taken advantage of that, it's a lighter box here. Um, but, uh, we just have a little sign out sheet here, and, um, so it's a shared library.
So, um, a little bit before I get into the presentation, a cou- a couple of things that you should have, I'm assuming everyone has. If you don't, is of course our, our adopted master plan that was adopted last year at this time, a little bit previous. And I think November 2020, when this was finally adopted. Um, I like a paper copy because I'm old fashioned, uh, but, uh, it's also online, you obviously can get this online. But this is the, uh, you know, in, in the big scheme of the documents that you have as planning commissioners, this is the policy document, so this is not an ordinance, you know, there's nothing in here that's enforceable. Um, this is a, a guide to development, a policy of, of where we want to go as a community. Um, generally speaking, uh, the township should follow a master plan, but you're not required to follow your master plan. If you don't follow your master plan, you've gotta have some pretty good reasons why. And, and conditions do change, you know, we, we update this about every five years or so. Um, you're not required to update every five years, you're required to look at it every five years. So if the document, five years from now or four years from now, is still valid, or you think it's still valid, um, all that has to happen is the planning commission has to put it on an agenda for review and make a motion that it still reflects the goals and policies of SAVO Township, and you're good for another five years.
It's not like our own ordinance or MZDA, who says that? What's the five year requirement?
Oh, that's in, uh, yeah, MZ, it's not MZ, it's, it's the Public Act 33, so it's the planning enablement. So it's not the zoning. So, yeah, Public Act 33, you have to review it every five years. Um, and like I said, you don't have to do much to it, you can just say, yep, still good. And if you do that, you're good for another five years.
Do you want us to wait until you're done to ask questions?
No, I have.
Um, you said it's not an ordinance, but there are ordinances to cite the master plan.
Yes.
So, um, it rises to that level if it, 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 it becomes a document that is enforceable by an ordinance. So.
Yeah, but in and of it's.
Which I didn't quite get when we were doing.
Yeah, the master.
Yeah, in and of itself, it's not an ordinance.
Right.
So if, if there are references in the zoning ordinance, so.
Yes, that'd be, that's, that's the ordinance. Things in there that are cited, there, it's an ordinance level document in that regard.
Yeah, but it has to be specifically cited. And there's not too many of those, but direct links, but there are some links. Now, the important thing about having a master, an updated master plan, and why it's important to do every five years, is why we have the next document. And again, uh, this is digitally, and the digital's pretty good in this case because it's searchable, it's that, it's a mini code. Some of you may be familiar with that, that's the way the zoning ordinance is online. Again, I like a paper copy, but I use a mini code as well. Um, this is the paper copy of the SAVO Township zoning ordinance, um, a copy, this is always available here at the township offices, or you can just print one off of the township website. Um, this is an ordinance, and so this is the law. So you've got, you know, this is the policy, master plan, this is kinda where we wanna go, this is the law. So, um, uh, Commissioner Reiser mentioned the, the laws. So this, the master plan is dictated by Michigan Planning Enabling Act, just Public Act 33. And there are very specific, uh, we'll, we'll get into more of that in my, my presentation, but it's a very specific things that, that, um, the Planning Enabling Act, Public Act 33 does. It allows a community, whether it's a city, township, or village, to create a master plan. And it, um, also allows the creation of a, of a planning commission, that's Public Act 33. Public Act 110 is the zoning. And so this is, Public Act 110 gets into all the aspects of zoning. So there's two laws that we deal with, as, that you all as planning commissioners deal with. Chris is aware of this, I'm sure Mr. Reiser's aware of this, um, that we deal with. And I would say if you're interested in planning and zoning, and obviously you are because you're spending your Monday nights, uh, you know, a lot of Monday nights with us here at SAVO Township Hall, um, I would recommend you go on the Michigan Legislature website, and there's just Google Michigan Legislature, and it's, you can look up any law in the state of Michigan and just put in the search engine, Michigan Planning, and Public Act 33 will pop up, and you can print it, it's not terribly long, it's maybe fifteen, maybe 20 pages. Uh, the same with the zoning enabling act, again, Michigan Legislature, it might be dot org, I forget what it is, what the prefix or suffix is, but it's, um, uh, and then that one will pop up, and that's, those, those are the two laws. Now, the other thing that's interesting to note is that these two laws that allow us to do zoning and planning are called, um, they're called enabling, it's enabling legislation. So it enables a community to do these things, you're not required to, like, SAVO Township is not required to do zoning, you're not required to do planning. Somewhere in our past, uh, I, I believe in the seventies, SAVO Township, you know, township board at some point thought it was important that SAVO Township have zoning ordinance and a master plan, and, um, began zoning, I refer zoning ordinance, it's go back to the seventies, I think, that's really when it kinda first appears that I found it here in the township hall, uh, hall, looking at the old arch acts and stuff. So somewhere in the seventies, it was decided that we should have a zoning ordinance. Do you have to have one? No. This law is called enabling legislation because it enables a community to do this, you're not required to do it. So in theory, it could be free for all here in SAVO Township, but, you know, we've, we've taken it upon ourselves and we've been doing it ever since the seventies. Yeah.
So first of all, when we first approved that, you asked if anybody wanted a hard copy, and I did say I wanted a hard copy, but I never got one.
We gotta, I'll get you one tonight.
Okay. And then, um, is the open space act a part of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Did I also get a hard copy?
Yes, before you leave, just remind me. In the box. So that's kind of the preamble to what we do. It's really two laws. These two documents are a big part of what we do. Again, before I get into the presentation, a few things, there's always discussions about our duties. Of course, a lot of our duties are development review. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about development review and how, like, the, the kind of, from easy to hard in, in development within Scioto Township. So, uh, right now, technically I am a zoning administrator for Scioto Township. I was appointed zoning administrator many years ago by a township board. And so, uh, as zoning administrator for Scioto Township, I have the ability to sign off on certain approvals without the planning commission or anyone else weighing in. So I have the, I have the authority to sign off on what's called zoning compliance certificates. So typical, this is the easiest kind of approval or review that we get in Scioto Township. So zoning compliance certificates can be anything from a new garage to, um, you know, a new house to a, uh, small addition to a commercial building or who knows what, something that's small. And I'll talk about that in a minute.
A launch and shelter?
Yes, and stuff like that. So stuff that's permitted, that's relatively small, things that, uh, I feel comfortable as long as it meets the standards of the ordinance that I can sign off of. You guys will never even hear about it. I review, you know, I'm here Tuesdays and Thursdays and every Tuesday and Thursday I've got appointments, but in between appointments, I'm reviewing zoning compliance. So I probably review eight or 10 zoning compliance every time I'm here. And so these just kind of churn through. And these are easy, you know, relatively easy things that don't rise to the level of anyone else looking at it except myself.
And those, do you call those administrative approvals?
No, this is zoning compliance approval. Administrative is, that's the next step.
Yeah, and, and it's sort of the first step for any building permit. So if someone is building something, it has to go through zoning first before it can go over to, we use Washtenaw County as our, our building, um, building code.
Correct. Scioto Township does not have a building department. And so we use Washtenaw County, which conveniently is located across the parking lot.
So like a, like a building official, so to speak?
Yeah, we do not have a building official.
We use... But like under our section here, zoning, you're the section 36 dash 29 zoning official. The office of zoning officials hereby created and that's, so that's you.
Yes.
So Washtenaw County is our permitting?
They are building permits, correct.
Well, building electrical, plumbing and mechanical.
Yeah, yeah, they do all building permits. And they will not issue a building permit unless Scioto Township first signs off on zoning compliance. They don't do zoning, we don't do building, but we're the check. If someone goes over there first who wants to build a garage or who knows what, they send them over here first. They won't even look at the permit. They send them over here first.
So all the MVP they do?
Oh, the one.
Mechanical?
Oh, yes, yes.
And structural.
Yeah, they, they do.
Energy.
And they, they do, Washtenaw County does several communities. They do Scioto and Dexter and they, they probably do five or six different communities in Washtenaw County. So, so that's the first, that's the easiest. Now, I will say if, if, there's two things that can happen in zoning compliance. Sometimes people will apply things or apply for things that I cannot approve. And that will, that'll happen in one of two things. They'll be applying for something that's too big that, that I can approve, um, like a building addition or some people, or a change of use that's going to create a problem with parking or something like that. And if it's too big of a change, I can't sign off on it. And then that might rise, that might rise to the requirements for a site plan. And then that would appear in front of the planning commission. Sometimes people don't know and they just show up with a zoning compliance and I say, whoa, I can't approve that. The other, the other way it might come be, uh, another reason that it might lead me in zoning compliance if I deny something at zoning compliance. Anything that the zoning administrator does, it's not just me, it's any zoning administrator, based on Public Act 110, any zoning administrator's decision can be appealed to the zoning board of appeals. So if I make a decision and I say, if I deny something and I say, no, we can't do that because of some peculiarity in the zoning ordinance and some resident doesn't agree with me, you know, I, of course, I can't be the, you know, I'm not the final say. And so there, there are always, in zoning, there's always an out, you know, there's always a, a second path. So there's a black and white zoning path is out, which I always tell people. And then there's another way. And that other way is either an appeal through the zoning board of appeals or taking the township to court.
So due process.
Yeah, yes, there's, there's, there's a way. I can deny something, but, you know, there's a way that people can challenge what I say. And so that would be to the zoning board of appeals for an appeal to administrative decision. Now, interestingly, that doesn't just apply to me. An appeal to administrative decision can also apply to your decision. So if the planning commission denies a site plan or denies whatever, whatever approval you're, you're approving, in theory, a developer or an applicant could bring that decision to the zoning board of appeals for an appeal. In fact, in some cases, um, if a developer tries to bring a, whatever that happens to be, a rezoning or a site plan directly to court to try to, you know, try to sue the township, the, the court may, not always, but the court may say that that case wasn't ready because there was an administrative remedy that hadn't been accomplished. And that administrative remedy is the zoning board of appeals. So...
They didn't exhaust the administrative.
Yeah, so they may say, oh, you're not ready for court. You got to go back to the zoning board of appeals and, and have that done on a local level. So, uh, so that's the easiest is, is zoning compliance, but even that gets complicated, obviously.
Now, we're a recommending body, no?
Well, not you, I'm sorry. It would have ultimately be the trustees, yeah.
Good.
Oh, it won't be, it won't be us.
Yeah, it would go on to the, I'm sorry. This is because you're, we are not the most...
Good catch, Mr. ...
In all cases, except for the master plan, you guys are recommending body. So, so that's the easiest zoning compliance. The next step down for review is what Commissioner Moore said, and that's administrative site plan approval. Now, administrative site plan approval is an approval process for a, for a site that that's a little more than just a zoning compliance. That, um, allows the township staff, that's planner, engineer, fire department, utilities, we still do drain commission, road commission, you know, everyone gets reviewed except the planning commission and township board. Those are for smaller additions. Like if someone was to build a small addition onto an existing commercial or industrial building, there's provisions in the zoning ordinance that allow us to review that administratively if it's not, if it's, if it's under a certain size.
So you're talking like 36 dash 178 administrative review without submission to the planning commission? So that, that's the...
Yeah, exactly.
172?
178.
When do those come into play?
The administrative review has always been around as far as I know. It, it was probably tweaked 10 or 12 years ago, but, um, we've always...
2007?
Yeah, we, uh, go on to that.
That's what the ordinance dated.
That's last time was revision.
No, I mean like what project did you try to...
Oh, well...
Well, that gazebo to the arms, right?
Well, that...
Oh, the shelter. Yeah, originally was an administrative.
That might have been something.
I thought, yeah, I got, thought it was the first is only...
Oh, baby, yeah.
Well, there are small, you know, there's a few that go through the process that want a small addition on a building or something that just doesn't rise to the...
Yeah, say you wanted to add a vestibule or, you know, something that was, there are certain square footages or percentage of square footage.
The scope of, the scope of that is set forth in our ordinance.
Yes. Yeah, there's, it's a percentage, yeah, percentage of building or maximum square foot, whichever's less. And then so, and usually those are non-controversial. It's an industrial building, commercial building, they want to, whatever, you know, something that's not going to cause more traffic or more parking or stormwater retention issues or, you know, and just try to do those administratively as much, you know, those little ones we try to get through as quick as we can. So then there are, after administrative site plan approval, there is site plan approval. And so that's anything new, so any new structures in a commercial or industrial district. Site plan review does not apply to new homes. That's, that's just a zoning compliance and a building permit. But site plan review is for any new commercial, industrial, office, building would have to come in front of you guys. And that's what we do a lot of, we do site plan approval. Site plan approval is, uh, is this, is the site plan review process that is for uses that are permitted by right. And so what I mean by that is in every zoning district, there's two lists of uses. There's a list of uses permitted by right and there's a list of conditional uses. If you're in one of the uses listed by right, um, this is supposed to be now, you're, so back up. This means you're in a proper zoning district. This means the use you're providing, somewhere along the way, Scioto Township has indicated that this use is not controversial or damaging or, or something that you would typically find within a certain zoning district. And so, so a site plan, use by right does come to the planning commission. However, if, if an applicant meets all the minimum standards, like front yard, side yard, rear yard, building height, stormwater retention, number of parking spaces, landscaping...
Zoning?
Yeah, well, there already, there wouldn't be a use permitted by right for zoning. Zoning has to work, yes, that, that's, it has to be a use permitted by right in the zoning district.
Now, what does it say that? Cause I, what does it say that if you, if you're in the right zoning, you don't need a conditional use or PUD, that you shall get approval? What is it, where are you mandated or where are we mandated to approve it? Is that, is that in, in, in our full site?
I think it's in there at some point. And it's been, I'm sure it's been litigated over the years.
Sure, I'm looking at here. The site plan shall be reviewed and approved upon a finding that the following criteria are met. Criteria of site plan review. So there's like, I don't know, 13, 14 things. And then if all those 14 things are met, then you get, they get the stamp of approval?
Yes.
And is that from you or is that from planning commission? Or is that from the trustees?
Trust, well...
Or from everybody up, up the chain, so to speak?
Yeah, recommendation from you and then ultimate approval from the trustees.
You'll see that highlighted in Doug's memos and different project site plan meetings before us. He'll list out all the seven elements that have to be met per stature.
And, and one thing to, this would be of interest too. In, in some jurisdictions, when it's a by right, the planning commission is the final approval as opposed to going to the trustees. So that's just something, you know, and, and because, you know, if you, if it meets the certain criteria, and then, because there's also the engineering stuff, we don't, and that's one of the issues is in a site plan, we get a very preliminary, um, typically plan to review and approve, recommend approval. And then it gets the full engineering before it goes to trustees for approval. And so we never get to see the, the full engineering. So we're approving really a pretty preliminary plan. So in, and I think as, and this would be just something to talk about, you know, Scioto process, whether you want to continue that process or does the planning commission take more of that off the plate of the trustees? So you're not dealing with the by right site plans. And, but we also get to see the final engineering review or of, of the, of the project.
Yeah, Sam Hill is on the agenda for tomorrow night. The, do you remember that one? It was a while ago, the restaurant?
Yes, yes, yes.
Creekside. So I noticed that was, it's been a few months and then it comes to us, the board. So in between, there is, there's a checklist that you had agreed that needed to be done. Who, who oversees that? Oh, you do? I do? No, you didn't. Me?
Yeah, well, it's, uh, yeah, there's not, well, I, I do part of it. So after it leaves the planning commission, it doesn't go to the, it goes to township board for ultimate approval.
That's what I...
And between, between planning commission approval and being put on township board agenda, they have to go, what's, what they have to go through is called detailed engineering. So detailed engineering, planning commission doesn't review detailed engineering. So, and so at that point, uh, the township engineering consultant, OHM, will do a detailed review of like, you know, storm pipe to make sure it's the right size and depth underground and all that kind of stuff. And then OHM will do a review of detailed engineering. We do a review and we try to catch the planning commission, you know, we try, in our review, we'll try to catch the planning commission conditions and any outstanding conditions from our last report.
So detailed engineering, a term of art or is it embedded in our code of ordinances somehow specifically? Cause I see site engineering, I see, I, I, I see, uh, full site plan review that talks about, or the criteria for site plan that talks about all the engineering, storm sewers, stormwater facilities, like... Yeah, like...
Yeah, I believe it's in the ordinance, but if it's, it's, if it's not, it...
Or that's just kind of what it's called?
Yeah, that's what it, that's what we call it. It's detailed engineering is like the next step. So there's, we call the process full site plan approval. Site plan goes to planning commission, detailed engineering gets worked out between planning commission and township board.
And you're the traffic cop on that?
Us in OHM, yes.
And then after the project, after the board approves, there's, they still have things to do, the developers, so who...
May, may, maybe or maybe not. Typically after township board approval, you hope that there's not too many outstanding issues. But sometimes there are a few. Hopefully those are very minor at that point. And if, if at the township board, there's still minor issues, say you need, like typically OHM will say, we still need a soil erosion permit, we need a pro commission permit, we need blah, blah, blah. Those will be picked up at a step that planning commission or the township board don't typically see. And that's the pre-construction meeting, which is a meeting between the engineer and the applicant and the applicant's contractor. And OHM will not allow the project to move forward unless they have all those permits in hand. So that's the pre, that's the, um, pre, it's briefly called pre-con, pre-construction. So really the step of a, steps of a site plan are pre-application meeting, submittal, planning commission, detailed engineering, township board review, pre-construction meeting, building permit review over at the county, and then, after the races.
Yeah, and, and I think people should understand too that, that submittal phase, there may be multiple submittals that the applicant makes before it even comes to the planning commission. So they're already saying, you know, it, it doesn't even get here unless the number of...
Yeah, yeah.
Items are minimal.
Yeah, we have another step. You're right, I missed a step. There's a step called the staff review meeting. And that's a meeting before the planning commission. And that's a meeting where we will have our review done. OHM will have their review done, the road commission will have their review done, health department has. So all the reviews are done and we sit down with the developer and go over our reviews. That's at that point that I kind of call that, now this is not in the ordinance, but I call that kind of a go-no-go meeting. And so we'll sit there and I'll talk to, we'll, we'll be looking at our reviews, OHM's reviews, health department, drain commission, road commission. Everyone's sitting around a room. Uh, and at some point, if there are 20 items that I've got and 20 items OHM has, five items that road commission has, we just tell the developer, you're not ready. I mean, this is not ready to go to the planning commission. You got to resubmit, clean these things up before you're ready for planning commission. That was a, that was a step that was added back when we amended the site plan review section, back in whatever year that was, um, because the planning commission was not happy with getting incomplete site plan submissions. Cause there is no, there is no check before it got to the planning commission. So there'd be half baked plans coming in front of the planning commission. They would get tabled and it would just waste everybody's time. So, um, they instituted what we call the staff review meeting and that, it's, it's worked, I think it's worked out really well. And then if it's go, then we immediately put them on the next available planning commission to... So that, that's the site plan review process. Now, moving on down, down the road of development review processes, the next one would be, maybe not in exact order, but the next review process would be a rezoning. Now, re, just a straight rezoning is a very easy application process. The applicant doesn't technically have to give us any plan. And even if they do give us a plan, we can't hold them to it. There's a straight, talking about a straight rezoning from like, say, C1 to I1 or R1 to C2. Who knows what the rezoning is? They can tell us what they're going to do. They could even show us a plan what they're going to do, but we can't hold them to it. I mean, they could walk out of this room, sell the property to somebody and do something completely different. So that's why you'll hear me say during a rezoning, sometimes the developer will say, well, I'm going to do senior housing compliance. That's why I need multiple families zoning. And I always, in my report, will always try to put, well, okay, the applicant says they want to do senior, they say they want to do senior... they say they want to do a senior housing project, but here's all the things that could happen if we rezoned to multifamily. So we have to understand that we can't hold them to a senior housing. You know, that we have to look at everything that's in the district.
It comes with a C two or a C three.
Yes, whatever, whatever they're proposing.
Can we rezon individual parcels for people? Spot zoning?
Yes. Um, you, if it, if a, we're not supposed to spot zone.
So what is spot zoning?
However.
For the benefit of the public and people here?
Well, um, so if if you have a, a piece of property that is completely different from anything around it. So say, say you're in the middle of the ag zone and somebody wants to stick a multifamily zoning district right in the middle of the ag zone, that would be a spot zone because it's not, there's nothing adjacent to it, there's nothing around it. We, we, we are not supposed to do.
So it's a dirty word, we don't do it, we just do something else and call it different? We call it rezoning, is that kind of what happens, universally?
No, no, a spot zone is a rezoning. A spot zone is a rezoning.
But it's a, it's a prohibited or discouraged rezoning as opposed to the good rezoning that happens?
It is discouraged, some people I've heard say it's illegal, I don't know it's illegal. Now, I say it's discouraged, however, if your master plan is calling for a particular part of your township to be something, then it's not considered a spot zone. It's just the first in, it's like the first, you know, the first.
I've heard that as a dirty word, but I don't know if that's because our ordinance says it can't be done or if Michigan, uh, Zoning Enabling Act says it can't be done, or published cases says it can't be done, I just.
Yeah, it, it's, it's probably published cases says it can't be done. And, um, and I think the Michigan Association of Planning, it's just bad practice to have little spots all over your community.
And so do we just call them P U Ds then?
No, that would be a P U D.
Or a condition. I mean, at some point, it's what you call something.
Yeah, well, we'll, 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 we'll get to P U Ds in a second.
Can I, can I go back and ask you a question?
Yeah.
Um, so with these site plans, there's a by right, and then what's the other?
Uh, condit, uh, conditional use?
Conditional use.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna hit that in a second. Yeah, so, so rezoning is a very simple application. It's, applicant doesn't have to tell us what he's doing, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. I don't like when they tell us because we can't hold it to them, we can't hold them to it. But, um, uh, they can do that. And and I will tell you, as far as spot zoning goes, Syo Township does not, I, I, I can't remember a time that we did a spot zone. Syo Township has held very, very closely to their master plan in all the years I've been here. And, uh, we, anyway, I, 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 I think we've done a very good job of rezoning where it's supposed to rezon and not rezon.
And and the idea of rezoning, there's criteria for.
Yeah.
The rezoning.
So, so, um, so someone could petition, um, the township to rezone an area with no idea what they want to do?
Absolutely, yes.
Or or they could say, I want to do something.
Other than generally?
Generally, they have to meet the zoning, like the, 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 the certain zoning areas, say what you can do in those areas. They have to meet that.
Yes.
And with the re, uh, the application for a rezon, do we have discretion to deny that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, cause there are criteria that you use to, does it meet certain criteria for rezoning? And part of that is the master plan, adjacent parcels?
Yeah, big part of, big part of any rezoning request is the master plan. What's the master plan calling for for rezoning? And that's the first thing I look, you know, when the developer comes, meet me, and I meet with a lot of developers here at the township offices. You know, for today, they have some idea, first thing I do is call the master plan. And so this is what it comes, they say, well, what do you think about this, what do you think about that? And, um, I'll plug the master plan and say, well, it's not really what the plan's calling for, and so all of a sudden, now you have an up to the path, you know, you're, you're, you've got up to the path.
So this is kind of what I was talking to you pre-meeting about, the guardrails and the gallows and all. So you say we have discretion to deny it, but if someone is coming to us for rezoning saying, for some commercial use, let's just say, if they, if that meets that zoning or or, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we don't have to follow some ordinance that guides us how we can say no, like we do with the P U D. We can just say, no, we don't want that.
No, you, yeah.
Or we don't like that petition, no.
Yeah, no, you can't do that. You, you still have to have, you still have to have valid reasons. And one of the most valid reasons is it doesn't meet the master plan. So you would say, for example, we are recommended to deny all this rezoning because it doesn't meet the Syo Township master plan.
So I've got the, you know, rezoning application in our website on one page in the zoning ordinance and the, the zoning map, what were some, I see a lot of A one, I see, uh, what would be some examples of rezoning requests that this planning commission might see on the horizon or has seen in the past few years? What do people want to do differently than what it's zoned, you know, in in our township?
Um, we have seen some different, we have seen a number of rezonings probably within the last year on Jackson Road.
From what to what?
From industrial to commercial, we actually saw one from commercial to industrial. I mean, it, it's depends on where they're at and what they want to do.
Two to C three or?
Yeah, we have, we have some various, uh, changes that are proposed within the Jackson Road corridor occasionally. Uh, mostly within the Jackson Road corridor is probably where we're seeing.
To make an idea for something they want to do work?
Yes, yes.
Is there anything else that that jumps out like, oh, hell no? Or some, is there, like, what else do people want to do? Or might they want to do that we could come across?
Um, say that again?
You know, I mean, like, I'm just looking, there's, I'm just looking at the zoning map and wondering what someone might want to do with a large segment of land with respect to rezoning?
Um, well, the, the, you know, usually a large section of land, people are looking to do some kind of residential, large residential development.
Do they take that to like R one, two, three, four, or do they take it to P U D?
Well, it could be both.
Could be both.
Could be either.
Cause you can rezon within the P U D.
Yeah, it could, it could be either one of those.
But we, with that project down west of, uh, on Jackson, west of, um, Baker, that big industrial park, that's an example of, uh, was that rezoned? I think that, I don't know the name on that.
With you?
No.
No, 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 this would be on, uh, west of Baker, on the right.
On the north side.
On the north side, yes. In the big, big industrial park.
Oh.
You set up the development district?
Been there a long time ago, it's been, it's been there for a while.
Okay.
That's what you're talking about.
They set up the development district there?
Yeah. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes, the north side.
One?
Just past the farm.
Reson that, that was, that was on I R P, it's been zoned I R P for years.
Okay.
But I thought this.
Which is Industrial Research Park. So that, that's exactly what that was zoned for. However, to answer your question, I mean, it, people could request, uh, a straight zoning to one district. That would be, that's what we're talking about now, not talking about P U Ds, a re, a rezoning from, say, ag to R one or ag to R two, or ag to R three, or whatever the zoning may be, um, or.
I see a lot of ag.
Yeah, yeah, and now, and we're just talking, I hope no one minds if we're just kind of free will movement.
No, 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 I just, I just, yeah, just curious what might come down the pike and what the tensions are and what we're, ultimately, it's up to the board of trustees, not this planning commission.
Yes. Now, a couple of things that, a couple of, of our, of our own bumpers that we have to a certain degree are, um, one, of course, our master plan. So we look at that to see what, see what the master plan is calling for in these areas. Uh, two is a sewer service district. So the sewer service district is typically or generally, it's exactly along the Jackson Road corridor. And over the years, we've had, you know, had more than one, a number of requests to extend the sewer service district.
Some might list some questions to talk about at the appropriate time.
Yeah, and we, um, you know, we, the Syo Township has been very strict over the years about expanding the sewer service district, partly because we don't have much choice in the matter because it's a contract with the city of Anovera and.
It's not our system.
Yeah, and Syo Township. But we have, the township has negotiated in the past to expand the district on a very infrequent basis, like years and years. But, um, that is one big, uh, that's one big drawback limitation to someone going out in the ag part of Syo Township and saying they want to put a subdivision. You know, we've had, uh, big, well-known developing companies that say, we'll pay everything they need, let us run that sewer south of Jackson. And, you know, the answer is no, we can't do that. So the, the township sewer service district is.
So can I back you up right there?
Yeah.
So I think to answer your question, um, Commissioner Riser, is that I think that the idea is to control development and density, so to speak, um, along the Jackson Road corridor, whether it be commercial or residential. And that's one of the ways that we control the growth and density in non-Jackson Road areas.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to you? John?
Yeah.
Yeah, however, technology has made it a little more challenging with the evolution of the community wastewater treatment facilities.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say that there's incoming and there's outgoing.
Yes.
So, um, what do we have for incoming? Where does our, where does, where does Syo Water extend to, uh, you know, municipal water services?
Roughly the same as the sewer service district.
There's a, uh, what is it? It's, uh, Baker Road.
Liberty.
There's, along Baker Road, there's some, there, there are certain areas that are served by water that aren't served by.
Yeah, I mean, it's roughly the same, but there are some outliers to that, yes.
And and then the other discussion that we've had around water is, um, the effect of the plume. And, um, you can talk a little bit about that, but there's been some, also some talk about having some sort of overlay or something that, um, the hydro, I always get this wrong, I forget a syllable, hydrological.
Hydrogeological.
Hydrogeological reports at pre, at, um, preliminary submission.
Yeah.
So you.
Which is whole different, whole different, yeah, whole, whole different.
But that's a water, that's, that's really a water issue because of, of, um, the, you know, the pollution that's there.
So let, so, yes, so let's get back, so let's get back to our list here real quick. So we're still on rezoning, so again, rezoning is the easiest.
Right.
Yeah, reason, that's fine, rezoning is the easiest application, but sometimes the most difficult approval because a rezoning is really easy to deny. If someone comes in with a rezoning and it doesn't meet the master plan, it's a really easy denial. And so it's an easy one to apply for, it's an easy one to get denied, um, and it's, so, anyway. It, it, and now the, the difference between this, between administrative site plan and site plan is this is the first kind of review that requires a public hearing. So anytime someone requests a change in the zoning map, which is a rezoning, they have to have a public hearing. So then everyone within three hundred feet of the property is notified by mail. So everyone, uh, and that's, that notice is sent out by the township staff. And everyone can then, is, is made aware of the rezoning, they can come out and voice either their support or their, uh, you know, concerns about the rezoning. And, uh, and so this is the first time of these review processes that the public is, is introduced in, uh, trying to get their input on a particular item. So that's rezoning.
Can we typically invite the public by posting it and also by sending out direct mail to the neighbors? Is that how we do it?
Yes.
But it does get posted as a general or or not?
Yes, yep, so, uh, uh, all public hearings have to be posted in a newspaper of general circulation, um, which is a whole topic of discussion here, but just, let's just say, it's hard to find a newspaper of general circulation these days.
The Sun Times or Legal News?
Yes, Sun Times or Washington Legal News, yeah, yeah. That, that's what Syo Township uses, they use both. Last I heard, they're using the Washington Legal News and the Sun Times. So, um, those are considered newspapers of general circulation.
Did you see the hearing at the site plan approvals?
Nope, nope. There's no requirement for a public hearing at a site plan.
By right.
Just a standard of site plan by right.
Oh, oh, okay, we're still on by right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And so, and so, uh, so now we, we send out, just to be clear, we send out mailed notification to everyone within three hundred feet. It's a notice in a newspaper of general circulation, and it's posted outside the door here, the township office door. There's a box, maybe some of the mayor may not know because there's an actual public notice box.
Then the public knows or not.
Yeah, maybe the public doesn't know, but there's a box, all the community, all township halls throughout the state of Michigan have a box. And then that's where you place legal notices, and it has to be posted there, um, as well. So actual physical notification, mail, newspaper, and, um, I don't know if they're on the website, I don't think they do this one.
Yeah, I think we have a thing for public notifications on the website. I think there is, I think there is a.
There's a Pam Boyd does for us. It's a Pam does for us.
No, there is.
There's not a legal requirement.
No, no.
No, but I think there is a spot on the, on the website for, for notices.
Resonings do not require a site plan to accommodate them, even an area plan or a conceptual plan. They just can come in with the rezoning blank canvas. Yep, yep. Um, now, I'm gonna complicate things because the terminology is ridiculous, how the law is written. Two things are gonna sound a lot alike, conditional rezoning and conditional use, but they're totally different. So let's first talk about conditional rezoning. So we just talked about zoning, so zoning is a not, now, the first three, let me, let me say one more addition. Actually, that's, so this is also, uh, I'll talk about that one. So conditional rezoning is a type of rezoning that has only been allowed since, I think, twenty twelve-ish, uh, when the law, when the planning and zoning enablement changed. Conditional rezoning allows a developer to place conditions upon themselves. We can't place conditions on them, it's not like a P U D or special hand use. So if a developer, let's say a developer wants to rezone a piece of property on the Jackson corridor to commercial, let's say it's currently zoned industrial, and maybe there's still a few little pieces zoned agricultural out there in the Jackson Road corridor, believe it or not, so let's say someone comes in and wants to rezone a piece of commercial. Now, we allow a whole lot of stuff in the commercial zoning district that the township may find objectionable. You know, there's, there's all kinds of stuff, there's, there's, you know, auto repair and collision shops and things that can cause noise and traffic and so on and so forth. Let's say the applicant just wants to put in.
A bookstore.
A dentist's office, or let's say a bookstore, a nice, who doesn't want a bookstore? And so we're, so we're, so we, so the developer could say, you know what, Syo Township? I know you have all this list of things that could happen, we're gonna condition ourselves, we're gonna take, we're gonna cross off all these other things, and we're gonna leave bookstore, and we're gonna leave dentist's office, and maybe a couple of other things that are kind of non-controversial. So, and our, yeah, and so we, you as a planning commission, ultimately the township board, will look at that conditional rezoning and either accept or reject it, you don't have to prove it. But what you can't do is add conditions. So the way that, the way the enablement legislation allowed conditional rezonings is that these conditions have to be brought to you by the developer. As weird as that is, that's how, that's what it says. And so the developer can give you fifteen conditions, not only can it be a limitation of use, the app, the developer can actually provide you with a site plan, which is something we can't require for a straight rezoning. They can provide a site plan and say, if you rezone this property, we will add buffering on the east end of the property because we know there's residences over there, we will save all these trees, they can offer other conditions. Now, what we can't do in this process is say, okay, but why don't you do this, this, and this? Now, what you could do is postpone it and maybe have them go back to the drawing board and come back to you. Or you could just deny it if you weren't happy with it. But during the deliberations of the planning commission, ultimately the township board, you know, what you can't do is say, yeah, well, Grant, we, we like this conditional rezoning, but why don't you also limit A, B, C, and D use? So it's a really odd part of the legal legislation. It's maybe, some people call it contract zoning, uh.
But don't they have a meeting with you and you say something like, gee, my board really wants a movie theater, or my board really wants a little restaurant there, or something like that, or we want a microbrew, or we, we, you know, I, I can't tell you what to do, but these are the kind of things, and you put a solar in the backyard and, boy, you'd probably lock it up. Do, do things like that happen, or you can't say in this?
I can say, I, I, I have no problem saying.
I think that usually comes up in the pre-application.
No, no, I, I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, during a concept, during a concept meeting, that sort of thing does come through. And, and, you know, I will try to guide people the best I can on, on how, you know, what can, what are some uses that.
No promises, but here's what the kind of things that are likely to.
And, and I tell them, I said, I'm just one guy, and in fact, I don't even vote. But here's my experience with the township is you're not gonna get an adult bookstore. Okay, that's something you should kind of just take off, you know, just take that one off the table. Put your line through that. But you could do a couple of these, you know, maybe some of these other things would be acceptable. So, and then it's really ultimately, you know, it's up to you guys, obviously.
Why, I guess I've never understood this conditional rezoning. What, what, what is appetizing to the developer to do that?
Because they know, well, they don't know, but.
Say yes.
Yeah, they, yeah, they might get a yes. Because if they just go in for the straight rezoning with all these other things that we find really objectionable, we could say that they have.
I see.
But, but there may be some, you know, there may be a couple of things that are.
And these are, and we have discretion to say yes or no.
Yes.
So let's say the conditional rezoning, they, they wanted the bookstore, the dentist, and a restaurant. That, they set that rezoning for the, forever? Really?
Conditional use.
No, no, it's conditional rezoning.
Conditional rezoning, conditional use.
Conditional use.
Goes with the property.
So it runs with the property, the next buyer would be.
In the last.
Locked into that.
Correct, yeah.
They could always come back and ask.
In the last five, six years, have there been many of these?
There have been a few.
And you anticipate some in the next couple of years?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we've had.
It's a good, it's, it's a good tool.
Always.
Can blow off of John's question earlier. In the course of us discussing this conditional rezoning, can we suggest to the developer to, to change something, that's not the same as putting it on there?
Would that? I think in the course, see, this is the odd, the odd gray area of this part of rezoning. I would say that you could certainly make your, you could certainly make your desires known. And that would help guide the applicant for the rezoning.
You can say, I will not approve it if this, that, or the other is in there.
Well, I have a problem with S Y Z. I, you know, I.
Support. Well, maybe you don't say, I won't approve, you could say. I, I have a problem with that particular condition.
But haven't we said what we want to our master plan, really?
But not, not, not that, not that detailed.
And then what would the next course of action though, let's say, in this hypothetical situation where we've said, I couldn't support it because of these reasons, then would we, if we were all in agreement on, on not supporting it for those reasons, would we then say, we're gonna table it? And then they would come back to us, or would we say, we're denying it, and then they would come back to us? What's the right step?
We might say, we're inclined to not agree with that, and they might say, hold up, hold up, we'll, you know, we'll reconsider, we'd like to be.
Change their application in the middle of the.
No, no, they, they, they would have to, it would have to be reheard. There would have to be a whole new public hearing notice.
So would it be a denial from us first?
It could, or they might just withdraw at the meeting and reset.
Come back.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to be a denial.
And as a withdrawal or denial, I'm just trying to get a sense of like what the consequences are for applicant, or is there, are they bas- basically the same?
Yeah.
Their application money and have to start all over?
Yeah, they're starting over.
So what we've been getting is, it's, these seem to be pretty lucrative, people wanna do these, these storage facilities.
You're gonna say storage facilities.
These are very popular now, like auto dealers up and down Jackson. So, you know, I, they dare say we don't want to hold, you know, every other block of storage facilities. So that's kind of one of the examples I've, I've been thinking about.
And I can't, I've drawn a blank, but we do, we do get them occasionally. Some people call conditional rezoning too right, because the applicant, we can't place conditions on, but the applicant can place condition, you know, additional landscaping, additional screening, limit the use. So there are some similarities between this and a PUD, but, you know, but it's not a PUD. There's still reasons.
It's no public benefit discussion.
It'll show up on the zoning map. It'll show up on the zoning map, but then I'm pretty sure how they've done it in the past, they'll show up with an asterisk on the property.
So I just wanna make sure what I heard you say, you said we have discretion, so we don't have to have some reason for our, our no vote.
No, you slept every reason, yes.
But it's, it's not laid out like the PUDs.
Correct, oh, not nearly.
Okay. And I dare say that one of the liabilities in our decision would be that we would be consistent in what we, in what we vote yes or no about, and those kind of.
Or the reason to do it.
I would say that's a very good point.
As individuals or as a body?
As a client, yeah.
Yeah, consistency is really. Everybody's, you wanna treat everyone, whether it's an adult bookstore showing up or a dentist's, you wanna treat, you don't want to, everyone should go through the same process, the same standards, the same reasons for yes, the same reasons for no. That's when the township starts to put themselves in, in legal jeopardy. If you start making decisions that aren't based on the standards, maybe just because you don't like it. And let's say you treated someone differently because you liked it, oh, let's just approve that, it's a great use. And then you see you don't like, shows up and everyone denies it for either no reasons or really bad reasons. Now, I will also tell you that, you know, I, traditionally I would sit with you guys, back when you were in the D I S, I would sit with you guys. Now I sit behind you, it's kind of weird, but I sit behind you. If, I, I never, I try not to, I, I will not interrupt you guys. I mean, you guys are taking time out of your night to be here, you're, you know, great community volunteers. And you guys deliberate, I, I, I will, I don't interrupt deliberation. However, if I see you going down a bad path of emotion that I think might get the township in trouble, I'm gonna interrupt you, and I'm gonna try to stop you from making the motion, or maybe help you amend the motion to, you know, not cause problems for the community. And so that, that's where I try to jump in, is try to help you in those cases.
I still would like to give more thought to the idea that we cannot, we as a planning commission have to be consistent. I guess maybe I'm taking, I think we need to consider what consistent means. For example, if we currently have, you know, Jackson Road is over quite like a mile and a half of car dealerships right now. And I would imagine that at some point, at least one of those had to go through a planning commission. So I would disagree with the notion that we would, that this commission would have to approve the next car dealership that shows up on Jackson Road. Sorry, not talking about stuff by right, but in a hypothetical situation, saying that we would have to approve the next car dealership that shows up on Jackson Road just because we had done so in the past. I think it is not unreasonable for a commission to change its mind about where we want our township to go.
No, I, I agree, that's not, yeah, that's not the consistency I'm talking about. The kisses, consistency I'm talking about is a process. There's following proper procedures to come to a decision. It's not the particular methods. If you follow proper procedures and you follow them every time, your exposure to court is much less. If you have good reasons for your decisions.
That's it.
If you have good reasons for your decisions, there's not too many judges that are gonna overturn a township, township decision. They don't wanna, they don't wanna turn over township or city decisions. So I'm talking about process, not necessarily.
So what limitations on saying no to a conditional rezoning that we have?
Uh, it's, it's a rezoning, so it'd be the same issue with a regular rezoning, it doesn't meet the master plan. You know, whatever, those rezoning standards.
Yeah, so it's how you view those standards, and you wanna be consistent in how you, you, you say that it meets or does not meet those standards.
So it's easy for the PUD, because the PUD ordinance lays out the standards by which you have to judge in your decision. But these other things, I don't think the, the ordinance lay out the standards for rezoning.
Some, yes, some.
And, and that's what the, you know, the reviews always say, you know, indicate those items.
What we have to look at.
Right.
What we have to make decisions on.
How often do you con- conditional rezoning projects come up?
I mean, it's not, it's not really common, it's not common enough.
We've seen it.
We, we get them.
We've seen that, I think we've seen it too.
Couple of the last couple of months.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We do get them.
It's a storage facility.
So.
Now, maybe what?
So that's a conditional rezoning. Now, I'm gonna really make this confusing, because the next one I talk about is conditional land use, which is not a conditional rezoning, conditional land use is a whole different thing. As I mentioned, when, in, in our zoning ordinance, in every district, there's a list of uses permitted by right, and there's use of conditional uses. So the conditional uses are those uses that may be okay in certain circumstances, but may not be okay in certain circumstances. And it's up to the planning commission and township board to determine if that particular use that someone is proposing is okay in that location. So a typical example of that would be like a gas station. So gas stations are typically permitted in the C, let's just say C two, maybe C three. Let's, for, for sake of argument, let's say they're permitted in the C two district. Nobody who's listening, hold me to that, because I'm not sure it's true. But let's just say, for sake of argument, that a gas station is in the C two district, has a special land use. Well, that means that that gas station is, is acceptable in certain.
A special land use or a conditional?
Yeah, or conditionally, yeah, same, no, good question. By enabling that, kind of interchanges those terms. Some ordinance is called special land use, some call it conditional land use, it's the same. So. So the gas station we're looking at may be perfectly appropriate at a busy intersection in a commercial zone. But let's say there's another area of the township that's also zoned commercial, and there's homes all around. Well, the planning commission can look at that and say, this gas station's gonna create all kinds of problems for these homes. It's gonna cause, you know, smell and noise and light, and you could deny it based on what's going on on the property and the surrounding properties, township as whole. Special land use is a very powerful tool, and it's a discretionary approval. As opposed to other, as opposed to our general site plan is considered, it's called a non-discretionary approval. Um, the conditional, a conditional use is called a discretionary approval. And so you have discretion, the planning commission ultimately, well, you guys are, but ultimately the township board is making a discretionary call if you believe a special land use or a conditional land use is okay in that particular location. It was put in that zoning district because at some point when this zoning districts were developed, somebody thought, well, in this case, a gas station is okay in some areas, but maybe not okay in all areas. And we wanna give SIA Township in every community extra review time to look at this particular case. It's not just a slam dunk, it's not just setbacks in landscaping and building, I, and you're approved.
And it's, it might be things like a school, with like a private school, a childcare center, a church, something that generates traffic, and it, you know, that may be great in one area, but, you know, in, like you said, in the middle of a neighborhood, that might be more, more of an issue.
Would it be appropriate to look at, for instance, these gas tanks that go underground? To consider, like you said, more residential, consider leakage?
Just trying to make sure I'm understanding what we're talking about, this is the conditional uses that are listed under the zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
So in every zoning district, there's two lists of uses. There's the use, uses permitted by right, and then conditional uses.
Gotcha.
And so the conditional land uses, someone thought, yeah, these are okay, these are generally okay in this district, but they require extra review.
I believe one of the ones that came up that I don't think anybody here was aware, but it had to do with a, a recreational, a recreation conservation zoning. And there are certain things that are conditional in that, and they tend to be more active recreational uses. So in that particular case is, given the RC zoning, because some of it is part more active per land versus the sort of quiet preservation type thing. And so that's a judgment call on whether that particular location is good for more active recreational use.
And that's also, again, so rezonings are public hearings, conditional use is also a public hearings. Everyone within three hundred feet of the property is notified that, mail, newspaper, all that stuff. So then, this is where you're trying to get public input into the process. And when we get public input on these, for any of these use, any of these kinds of things, what perks my ears up, again, this is training, so I'm telling you what I think. When I'm listening to the public talk about their concerns with a, a conditional rezoning, a conditional use for a PUD, I'm looking at things that someone who lives in that area might know that I don't know. Like, you know, there's an intermittent stream that goes in my backyard. And that intermittent stream crosses the property in question. Well, that intermittent stream might not show up on any map, might not show up anywhere. And so all of a sudden, you're like, oh, there's an intermittent stream, we should keep, we should pay attention to that. So if, if there's, when, when I'm sitting here or there, wherever they have me sit, when I hear the public talk, and all of a sudden I hear one of these comments that come up that is like, I call local knowledge, like, we didn't, how would we know that unless you lived right there? That's part of the benefit of having everyone within three hundred feet come out, because they can tell you what's going on. Now, when, when you have the public necessarily come up and just say, I don't want it to, I don't, I don't want it because I don't want it, that's not helpful, to me, as a planner, that's not helpful. I get it, I get people don't like change. But when I'm trying to list things that might cause the township to deny something, I'm looking for those local knowledge comments from the neighbors that, oh, I didn't consider that. And believe me, there's lots of things I didn't, you know, I, I go through my review, I do the best I can, we try to do site visits. But there's always some stuff that people who live there know about that we just don't know about because we don't live there. And so those, those are the best kinds of comments that I think, and I think you guys should kind of pay attention to as well. Those kind of local knowledge comments.
And so the conditional rezoning requires a public hearing too?
Yes, yep. As, as does a regular rezoning. So regular rezoning, conditional rezoning, conditional use. Now, conditional use also requires, this is a two-step process. There's, the first step that comes to you is conditional use, public hearing. Let's say township board ultimately approves it. Then they have to come back for site plan. So then they go through a full-blown site plan. So conditional use doesn't require a full-blown site plan, but it does require a site plan of sorts.
But, but zoning, rezoning, conditional rezoning, conditional use, those all require public hearings. And then some require site plans.
Only the conditional land use.
Conditional land use will ultimately require a site plan.
And if there's a, an existing building and somebody's trying to do a conditional use there, would they still have to do a site plan?
They have to do a site plan of sorts. Now, that's a really good question, because if someone is simply occupying an existing building, and the, and the use that, let's say it's an existing industrial building. But we had, so for example, the, the little brewery, Holmes Brewery, was occupying a, an existing old vacant industrial building. And they put in a small cafe, they put a small cafe, and they're brewing beer, and they're doing all kinds of stuff in there. Of course, that's not a permitted use in the industrial district. You know, industrial is industrial, it's manufacturing, it's all that kind of stuff. Well, they wanted some, you know, some other stuff, so we, believe it or not, in our industrial district, we allow restaurants as a conditional use. So we, we kind of gave, we had them go through our conditional use as a restaurant, the Holmes Brewery site. But because they weren't changing the footprint of the building, because they weren't, they didn't need to add parking, because they didn't have to go through all these things, that, they did provide a site plan, but it wasn't full-blown site plan, it wasn't, that was, that was the one step, that they didn't have to go to the next step. What I was referring to before is like, say, a brand-new facility, after they get conditional land use approval, that they have to go through a site plan approval, so that's the second step. But you're right, if it's an existing facility where they're not making changes, it's possible that they don't have, that's it, after, after town, after special land use approval, that'd be, they would have to go.
Is that the facility on, of? Is that the facility on, off Wagner?
Mm-hmm. By Spring Therapy, kind of around the corner from Galvin. Jackson?
It's on the, it's on the Jackson.
The Jackson, then Wagner.
Yeah, Jackson, yeah, I think it's a Jackson Plaza that's nice. But yes.
So you can get it off of Jackson Plaza?
I think it's on Jackson Plaza.
It's on Jackson Plaza. And you can get it off of Jackson or Wagner, it it links.
Earthway Plaza?
That's another.
What, Jackson? Is it Jackson Plaza?
Okay. So, sorry to make this so painful, but so, so that's conditional use.
You're doing great.
The next one.
Marty.
The next one is the most, you know, it's the most controversial, obviously, and that's, so this is the last of the development, you know, ways to do development, and that's through PUD. So we've talked about zoning compliance, administrative site plan, site plan rezoning, conditional rezoning, conditional use. And now we talk about planning unit developments or PUDs. So planning unit developments or PUDs are like special land use, they're discretionary approval. Township, you're not, you were, you're no obligation to approve a planning unit development. This is a discretionary approval of a township. There is very specific standards within the PUD ordinance that we're supposed to find. There's supposed, planning commission is supposed to find it, township board is supposed to make these findings that they meet these various sections.
Sorry, can I interrupt you though?
Yep.
Because you said discretionary. If, my understanding of discretionary is that there's more to it than just what the ordinance says. It's also up to us to consider more than just what's in the ordinance, is that incorrect? We, once it meets all of these fourteen items in the ordinance, then it's gotta be approved, or we better have a.
Yeah, I would say that's more, what, the latter of what you said is more of what we should be doing. However, there is a lot of discretion in those standards. You know, community character, you know, what is, you know, what is that actually? You know, there's, there's, there's words in there that, there's a lot of discretion that the planning commission and township board can use. If something, you know, it's kind of like I say, it looks like a duck, walks like a duck, it's not fit and it's not fit. And you can figure out a way within the PUD standards to deny something that's not fitting. So.
You just have to make a cogent argument.
Yeah, you have to make.
Based on the provisions.
And that will help you the next time a PUD shows up that everybody loves, and you just approve.
Other than health, safety, and welfare, that kind of catch up.
That's an argument.
What's that?
That's one, that's an argument.
Yeah. And that, but that's, yeah, but that, good point, because that's what zoning is supposed to be based on, health, safety, and welfare. So, um, that's kind of the backstop of everything we do. So PUD is a, now, what is a PUD? Everyone talks about PUDs, and some people love them, some people hate them, uh, but what it, what it really is, what it is really process-wise, is a PUD is a rezoning to a specific site plan. So it's actually a rezoning. So if you look at our zoning map, you'll see properties that are actually zoned PUD, it's a district. However, it's a district to a very specific site plan. So what that means is that an applicant can, if, once they get a PUD approved, they can only do this under the PUD, nothing else. This is the problem that we're having with the Goodrich Theater. The Goodrich Theater and the two outlets were approved as a PUD. All the two outlets are built, they're doing fine. Goodrich Theater is closed, and so, uh, but that PUD was approved, that Goodrich could only be Goodrich Theater. And so that's the only use that can, based on the approved PUD, that's the only use that can occur on that site. And so any other use, they now have to come back in front of site of township and amend their PUD. And so that's, so the benefit of a PUD for a developer is that they could get something that we might not normally allow in our zoning ordinance. The benefit to the township is that we can tie them down to something very strict, and they can't do anything except what we've allowed in the PUD. So the downside to the developer is that if they ever want to make a change, it's difficult. Changes to PUDs are difficult, as, as the Goodrich people are finding out.
Right, I think, yeah, but that one in particular, because there's a synergy. My, my understanding in our discussions, that, because I always thought they had a synergy of the theater, the cigar bar, and the restaurant. There was no competition, but they all brought community to the location to spend money.
Yep, and as, as Jan mentioned in that pre-op meeting, that it should be active use. We're looking for an active type use, not a passive use.
Does that mean, what does that mean?
Oh, like storage, yes.
People are feeling it going.
Yes.
So, like, I'm looking at thirty-six dash two fifty-four, modification to an approved PUD plan. Does that mean that they have to come forward and modify that approved PUD plan, or is it way too late for that?
No, they have to modify, they, that would be change, I think it's past that part, if you go to the very end of the PUD section, there's a section that talks about amendments to a PUD. So they're, they're at the end of the PUD section.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, modifications to the approved, so that's the very end, and so, that's kind of where they are.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
A- and it looks to me that this ordinance was last tweaked, uh, or modified in two thousand thirteen, is that correct? So, I, I, so it's better, so, do municipalities, do they kind of change that, or is it, or they kind of leave it alone?
It depends, we're, we're.
Reviewing it right now.
Yeah, we're, we're updating it right now.
You are. What I should ask.
While you've missed quite a bit, and like I said to the other commissioners the other day, I'm gonna have to re- verge to take my arguments all over again.
One of the.
Just for you, Jen.
And like, is it design standards, is that like supposed to guide our decision-making? The design standard, like, like, a- as a body that reviews these, what criteria should we be taking into consideration based on our ordinance, and what should we not? Because you hear like, well, you need to get more for the fire department, oh, you need to get more for pathways, oh, no, you need to do affordable housing, oh, no, we need Kelvin water taken out, oh, no, we need to do this, like, so. What are the push and the pull?
Yeah, well, first and foremost, just like, it, it's technically rezoning, PUDs are rezoning. So first and foremost, there has to be some relationship to the master plan. You can't just propose a, a two-hundred-unit PUD in the middle of ag land with nothing around it, but, you know, that, that's, there has to be some relationship to the master plan. So that, in my opinion, first and foremost, there's gotta be this relationship. And after that, there's, you know, the, the standards talk about meeting, there's certain criteria that you have to meet for a PUD. One of them is, um, public benefit.
Yeah.
And so public benefit was, is not defined, although the update to the PUD standards is trying to provide a little more meat on the bone to try to define those public benefits a little bit better. Um, we did in our master plan, we have a whole new section in the master plan about, uh, PUDs and about what that public benefit could be, which is how you're supposed to do things. You're supposed to plan first and zone second, so we actually planned for that, and now we're updating our PUD standards to reflect the master plan. But, um, so one, master plan, two, you've got to meet the criteria for PUD. One of those criteria is public benefit. And, um, in the past, for many, many years, public benefit was seen as things like superior building architecture that you would not normally get for a, for a site.
Like a fancy Myers instead of a cinder block Myers?
Yeah. Yeah, like, like superior.
That's the sound of a.
Now.
Small town.
Now, that's not a PUD, just everybody.
No, I know, but I was, little sarcasm.
Yeah. It's not laws, Adam. So, um, just thinking of them. Yeah, but so superior architecture, things like we want, basically things we wouldn't normally get in a site plan. So, um, a, a better landscape.
Right, more landscape, more.
Right, better buffering, more open space, more, you know, uh, who knows, you know, one-way tra- one-way traffic pattern. I don't, who knows, whatever they come up with, that might be something that we wouldn't normally ask for. And, and traditionally, those are kind of things that the planning commission and township board would find, yeah, that this is a, this is, this meets, uh, um, a public benefit. These are things we wouldn't normally get, isn't that great? We get better architecture, better landscaping, better buffering. You know, maybe the use is less intensive than other things we could get, and so, uh, or it's a mixture of uses everybody likes. Well, we've probably three years ago or so, three, two, two, maybe two years ago now, there was this discussion that occurred about, we should be a little more specific about what public benefit means. And so when we redid the master plan, that was adopted November twenty twenty-one, there's a section on what that means, so we tried to be a little more specific in the master plan.
Not just taxes.
Yeah, and we specifically.
Like a couple of these guys.
We specifically mentioned.
Taxes you're gonna get.
We specifically mentioned three areas that we were interested in that could not guarantee to, but could be considered public benefit. And those are fire, you know, you know, uh, contributions to our fire department, contributions to our path program, contributions to utilities. So there's three things that were, are now mentioned in our master plan uh, that could be considered, again, not a guarantee, could be considered public benefit.
Like, what do you mean by utilities? Gas, electric, cable?
Uh, water and, water, so things that the township has control.
Are these ongoing contributions or a one-time contribution?
Well, since we've done them, uh, basically a one-time contribution. It depends on how they do it, it could, it could be strung out over several years, or it could be just a cash payment. Now, I will, let me tell you this, we have to be very careful when we talk about getting money from developers, because, well, it's a public benefit. All of these public benefits, if we're getting money from the fire department, it should be a contribution that has some relationship to the project itself.
To the parcel, to the, to the location quote.
Yeah, we can't just say.
Right.
Give us two hundred thousand dollars and we'll approve your project. I mean, we can't, we can't, this can never be twisted into a situation where it looks like site of township is taking money for approvals, whether that's for fire, or paths, or parks, or whatever. All of those contributions have to have some relationship to what they, what the developer is doing.
Well, that's easy.
Yeah.
Well, it's easy if it's on Jackson, because it's always utility is there.
Could be utility, you know, pump, a new pump station, you know, who knows what, you know. Your, your new, your four hundred new residents are gonna require additional sewage into the pipe, and that's gonna require a pump station upgrade, you know, who knows what, you can even quantify that. The fire department will say, your four hundred new units are gonna, you know, we, we know.
Your four-story.
Through modeling, we're gonna have to take twenty more trips to this site over the next five years, and that's gonna, you know, who knows what. And typically, we will, you know, we will ask, we'll ask, hey, O H M, or Steve in utilities, what do you think this project's impacts will be? Hey, you know, uh, Chief Hood, what do you think this project's impacts will be? You know, um, the tap group, what do you think this project's will be? And so we'll get some estimates and some ideas about what could be contributed to site.
So that, one of the things that I, uh, some coordination with the fire department needs to happen, because in one project, the, the, the memo from the fire department was not a problem, everything is good. And then we were trying to negotiate a ladder truck, and the developer even showed us the memo. Fire has signed off on this, so good. Now, we managed to get by, but I think a little conversation with the fire department. But I wonder what you think, what kind of public benefits are you, um, flagging in your mind that would be like, that might be a little questionable for us to press for?
Well, if, if, uh, I, I, like I said, I would be cautious if it looks like you're trading an approval for.
Shakedown.
A fee.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's not, doesn't sound terribly sustainable way of developing anyway, because you're eventually gonna have to pay for these things that you got the one-time fee for, right? You're gonna have to pay to upkeep this ladder truck, or this pump station, or whatever it is that we're getting. And if the tax revenue that we're getting from this new property doesn't cover that, then eventually, we're gonna run out of PUDs and have to pay for it ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I guess I don't know how to answer the long-term question there, but this is a, a definite change from how we used to do it. And, you know, we used to be very site-specific.
Right.
These are, these are the great.
Isn't that how it's generally done in municipalities? Or do they, are they getting these contributions for general, the funding of municipal government generally?
Um, I've seen both ways, yeah. It's, but, you know, it's, um, I saw just recently a PUD that I did up in the Northern Oakland County community that I represent, that the developer donated five acres for a, a water tower, because the township needed a water tower. So he donated five acres for a water tower, and now the township has a place to put their new water tower. It's required by, I'm not, or excuse me, Eagle. Um, so, yes, did that have a relationship to their project? Yeah, because they're adding new residents and they needed water pressure. So, you know.
Open space and.
Absolutely, yes.
Goodness.
So what if the planning commission prefers things like, I don't know, pathways, or solar, or this, but the, the board likes police and fire, or they like other things?
Board wins.
Board wins, yeah.
But then, but then does it have to, but then does that make it tricky? Because there's a certain approval that's been garnered and then, you know, that has to be redone and reconfigured? You know what I'm getting at, like?
Yeah, the planning commission typically does.
I'm not saying there's a right way to do it, I'm just saying, how do they resolve the discrepancy?
Because up, up to this point, the planning commission has not gotten into the nitty-gritty of those agreements. There's been a general understanding at the planning commission level about what the advocate, advocate would, uh, contribute or what the public benefit would be. And typically, after planning commission approval, but prior to going to the township board, the township attorney, the advocate's attorney, you know, engineering utilities, would all kind of get together, come up with something that's presented to township board.
That's when the figures are coming up.
Yes.
Yeah. So you might, we might not even see the numbers, we just see the ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do weigh in on the, the benefits, though.
Oh, yeah.
In the, um, in our ordinance, I don't know which one, but I, I read it a couple of months ago, Jackson Road Overlay District, and there are, um, benefits that are listed out. Now, is, does that have anything to do with the planning commission? It's in the, um, don't tell me which, what number the ordinance would be, but, like, you know, like a, like artwork or a sign or something like that.
Yeah, that, no, that, that's a little different, um, because the Jackson Road Overlay District is an overlay district that sits on top of the existing zoning. And, and you can do mixed uses within the Jackson Road Overlay District, so you don't necessarily have to do a, a PUD.
I think it's, uh, the requirement at certain intersections or gateways to have the community element.
Yes.
Right.
But that, that's a little, that's a little different, that's actually a requirement of that district.
Okay. I'd have to look back, but would, that would still have to go in front of the planning commission, yeah. Okay.
And then I think the wood, wood view up on Jag South side of Jackson, we asked them to put up some sign.
Yeah, I think there's something like a welcome to Siles.
Welcome to Siles, so that would be a public benefit too.
But, you know.
Oh, that was a requirement of the.
J-Rod.
A J-Rod, it wasn't a.
Was it?
No, yeah.
Public benefit thing, yeah. Yeah, I, if I remember right. I think the, the other thing about the PUD that I think is important is there's a section, and this is what we're looking at too, is that then there's the, um, uh, density bonus. So if they meet certain criteria, which are, would be of value.
To the community.
To the, to the project or the community or whatever, there's a, a, a density bonus, and you have to meet some, a certain.
But that's separate than the.
That's totally separate.
That's built into the PUD ordinance.
Right, it's totally separate.
But we were talking PUDs right now.
Right. Yeah, so that's, that's in the PUD ordinance, is the density bonus.
But I thought we were talking, yeah, I just wanted to make it clear, those, that's not considered a public benefit.
No.
But we will be getting into, um, a very detailed discussion of PUDs probably in our next meeting. So, let's, uh.
Let's post code.
Yeah, let's not get, we, so I, I just wanted to.
And it is nine-ten, and I know we were gonna try.
I wanted to get, I just wanted to go over it, so these are all of the development, these are the development processes that you as planning commissioners will see. These are, these are the different kinds of reviews, and they all have their own little intricacies. The other thing, the other duties that you guys do, the main duty. the main duty of a planning commission is to develop a master plan. And we just did that last year, so that has to be looked at technically in five, at four more years. I will mention this though, master plan, you don't have to wait for five years. You know, the master plan could be looked at every year if you want. If there is some part of the master plan that you want to reexamine, you can open up and do a sub-area plan. You could just, hey, you know, this part of the township needs some extra attention, let's do a sub-area plan and leave the rest of the master plan the way it is.
By vote, by majority vote?
What?
Or by just Jan putting it on the agenda or bringing up something or?
Yeah.
Somebody requesting.
There was something we wanted, we're gonna.
And then, I mean, one of those things, we should have that discussion soon because one of the things that goes into the budget would be special projects that planning commission would want our planning consultant to participate in, yeah. You know, to lead, yeah.
So just have a cost money.
Yes, just, no, you're not, you're not locked in for four more years. If there's something that really bothers you about the master plan, you could say.
Timing reserve.
Yes. So, it's a little quicker process.
I have a question about the relationship of the official zoning map to the master plan and our ordinance. And like, where does this come from? Is it persuasive? Is it the law of the land? Uh, who, how often does it get? Does it mean? Talk a little bit about the maps and how it fits into our code and our, our master plan.
It's in the master plan. Yeah, the, the.
I, I didn't see it.
Yeah, the zoning map is.
Or the land use maps.
Yeah.
This is the law.
Yeah, correct, yeah. To answer your question, that's the law. So the zoning map, uh, you know, was adopted initially probably in the seventies at some point. And it's been, it's been amended over the years.
Right, and this one, this one says township board adopted October twenty first, two thousand and three, and, and last amended October third, two thousand and nineteen, date printed, whatever. So like, how, how does this get adjusted? Through a master plan or through an ordinance or through a resolution? Or how do I know I have the most recent one that reflects what we're about as a township?
Um, the township assessor keeps the most current, the township assessor keeps the township master, uh, zoning map.
Okay.
So that may, that likely is not the most current map.
But he or she doesn't come up with it and it's a policy decision that the.
Who devises is what you're asking.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But you said, how do you know you get the?
No, 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 right. I would think it would be on our website too. And.
Could.
Yeah, but all the old ones are too.
So, but, but however, so this is an in-house map. We don't, we, Carl Rehman Associates doesn't do the zoning map. So that's, that's taken, that is updated by the township assessing department. So they are aware, made aware of when a rezoning occurs and they're supposed to be updating the zoning map. Zoning changes will be, can be requested by, uh, the planning commission, could be requested by the township board or can be requested by a property owner or developer. Well, it has to be a property owner, has to sign on to it. So there's three different groups that can request a rezoning. Planning commission, township board, or the property. And so that's all, so, and people can.
And, and then who approves it? The board ultimately?
Ultimately, the board.
Through this vetting organization, through this commission?
Recommendation of planning commission, approval of township board.
And then, it's, someone's gotta say, oh, I gotta change the map now, they just did this.
Yes.
And then.
And then you have the new one.
Real, ideally would be on our website.
Yes.
Okay.
Ideas.
Because, because I didn't see it in the master plan.
Yeah, the zoning map isn't typically in the masters, because it's not, it's not part of the master plan. It's, it's, so it's the interaction between the two, so the master.
That's my kind of question too.
The, the future land use map is the guide. It's not always gonna match. In fact, it doesn't match, you know, it matches in a lot of cases, but it doesn't always match. So typically how the future land use map is explained is that it's, um, it's where the township would like the township to go five to ten to twenty years down the road. And so things that are different in your master plan aren't always reflected in the zoning map. There are some communities that, uh, proactively take on rezonings to, to, uh, make their zoning map, um, equal, I can't think of a word, uh, reconcile it, to, to reconcile their zoning map with their future land use map. You don't have to do that. Most communities take more of a passive approach and allow, uh, property owners to come to you and request rezonings. And if the rezoning meets your master plan, they typically will approve it. Doesn't meet your master plan, typically deny it. But there have been, uh, you know, I've worked in some communities where a community will proactively search out for those inconsistencies and request to.
Go through the bowl or?
Go through rezonings. So township certainly could come up with that. I think about it, at one point, the township rezoned the whole township. So the township obviously has the authority to zone property because we came up with a zoning map to start with in the seventies.
So the, uh, the land use map is the same thing as the zoning?
No, land use map is the policy, that's the future land use, that's what the township would go like.
The direction.
Yes, the direction we'd like the zoning to go at some point in the future. Whether that's a year from now or twenty years from now.
And I think Jillian's. Two things, um, so how often do, do they update the zoning map? Or how often do people ask to have something rezoned? Because it seems like they could, it could be every week.
No.
On their schedule, like, we, we only do this.
I, I don't.
Couldn't be asked every week. Yeah, I'd put it in a month.
You have to go through the process.
Yeah, you gotta go through the process, yeah.
Okay, so it's a.
So it's after the trustees approve a rezoning?
Yeah, I, I can't think of, in the last four years.
P U Ds are a rezoning.
Every P U D is a rezoning.
Yeah, they, they happen. And then, and then, uh.
Yeah, these conditional.
Ultimately, the township assessing department updates its ordinance.
So the last two P U Ds that I'm aware of, there's, there's the, the one at Baker in Marshall.
Yes.
Um, and then there's the one at Zeeb, not Zeeb, Wagner, Wagner Liberty, correct?
But those both have not been fully approved yet, but yes, those are.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought, okay.
Those have been preliminarily approved.
Okay.
Yeah, so they have not been resold yet.
By the, by the board?
Yes.
Uh, I thought they voted for it, the board, but they.
The board voted for the preliminary approval of both of those projects.
And then they gotta come back and, okay. And then somebody, the assessor says, oh, good, I get to change the map.
Yes.
Are you reading the last step of what you wanted to do? But I have something that I, I think goes beyond that, but I wanted to wait until you.
Yeah, and, and I, 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 um, yes, I'm good, I'm good. I was just gonna say, so we do the master plan and then other studies, like corridor studies we can do, whatever, like planning studies, zoning ordinance amendments, so those are the kinds of things, so, that we do, yes.
Sorry, go ahead.
So, uh, do we, do we get involved or is it just the trustee? When, uh, municipality wants to annex part of our township? Bringing that up because of Dexter? Oh, well, no, not because of Dexter, but because of a developer who was trying to get that.
I believe, yeah, I believe that is strictly township board.
Okay, so we won't get involved in that?
Well.
It will, they.
You could, you could get involved. But that would, that would take what's called a Public Act four twenty-five agreement between the township and the city. And a Public Act four twenty-five would then talk about who's responsible for what. And if then the township was responsible for some of the site plan approval, then you would get involved. But the actual annexation part itself, that, that's gonna be elected officials kind of.
Can I ask a question about the four twenty-five, this is a little bit out of target, but. Is it, is it, you understanding that, that's, this is just a shell of it. So we enter into an agreement regarding property that's in the township ten or twelve years long, we share the taxes and ultimately after those ten to twelve years, the property is annexed to the other.
Essentially, yeah, something like that.
So I thought, at first I thought it was after the ten or twelve years and we would take over all the taxes, but.
No, it really depends on, four twenty-five agreements can be very open-ended. So the, it really depends on what the city and the township would come up with. That duration, how much tax sharing there is, when it gets brought into the city, if it got brought into the city, it could maybe never be brought into the city. There's no, no requirement that it brought into the city.
Okay.
Four twenty-five agreements are very open-ended, um, and allow a lot of negotiation between all the parties. Uh, it was initially set up as an economic development tool for townships that were outside of service districts that were next to a city. And they would be able to punch utilities into the township. Township would then be able to develop an industrial or office park, gain some tax income and then ultimately the property will be brought into a city. So.
Thank you, appreciate it.
But now it's kind of looked at not necessarily as an economic development tool, but more as a kind of annexation negotiation tool.
So does it sometimes happen that someone will ask us to do a project and we say no, and they say, fine, we'll go to the city and we'll have them annex us?
Um, that's where we're at.
That's.
That's.
I, that's what I was, you're in between the lines on your question.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen very oft.
Trustee.
It's very.
To be fair, that.
We can talk about this offline, uh, some form.
Uh, often, oftentimes it has to do with access to utilities.
Right.
For whatever reason, there's an issue with
perkability, whatever. This came about because of the wastewater, the lack of permit from Eagle for wastewater.
With the, with the developments that they have in mind, there's a problem. They could have a different development in mind and not have a problem.
I think there's a, a pretty good perk issue with.
And they want their. They want theirs.
There's a, there's a, there's a pretty good perk issue with that soil.
And, um, well, I'm not talking about any specific, you know, and, and just, just.
It could happen.
So it's water coming in, whether, whether it's, whether it well or whether it'll, whether you can put a septic field in?
That could be a reason for that, that developer.
Is it usually getting the fresh water or is it getting rid of the wastewater that's the issue?
Use it to wastewater.
So developer is gonna like
In San Antonio.
More density, because obviously that's more money. And when you're in these agricultural communities, if you will, they can't put as many units on if you're going well. So they, that's where it comes in, septic, I'm sorry, septic. So that's where you have a wastewater treatment system, to be able to consider that kind of density.
But there, there's also soil issues. And if you, if you don't have an area that you can get a reasonable perk, you.
You can't put a wastewater treatment plant in. You mean if it's on, if it's on clay?
Or you have a small area that.
Or wet, or super wet.
Wet, clay or wet?
Yeah. Now, I will say this, we have, you know, my experience is that we have very good, um, we have very good relationships with our adjacent cities, with both Dexter and Ann Arbor. And I've not known of a case where either community has tried to heavy-handedly annex parts of Scioto Township.
And designs.
Yeah. We have, we have good relationships with both communities.
So what about if you're not municipal water, then you dig a well water? And has the issue of the potential environmental impact on digging wells on the northeast side of the township with respect to the plume? And does that impact the water table and, i- i- you know, or is that?
Knights of Columbus. It has, it has, that definitely has come up, yes. That, that is a concern, that's, that's a concern that is, um, trying to be addressed. It's, it's, it's a concern that's come up in a project, uh, called the Knights of Columbus.
So my theoretical question is not as theoretical, it's like, wish it were.
You'll be, um, dealing with it.
Yeah, there's a study. So yes, that project, that issue has come up and it is a concern.
Okay.
Okay, well, I, I, I have a PowerPoint that I never showed you guys, but it pretty much was what, what, what we was talking about.
Well, I mean, I think that was really good to.
Yeah, I can.
Thank you for commenting my incessant question.
And we didn't even get to the planning. But it sounds like, I mean, this is good and I think, you know, we need to schedule, hopefully, another discussion one week where we could get with the P U D and some of the other things, what we want to take on next year so that we can look at the budget too. And what the planning, uh, commission priorities will be for the year, right? So, yeah.
I have, before we stop, um, can policy papers by the Board of Trustees, um, help set our, our direction that we go? I mean, if they, if they were to write, here's what the public benefits, can they write a policy paper that says what they consider the public benefits to be for developments? And then we could implement that? Is that how you could do it? Or does it have to be in ordinance?
Um, it, it, well, it had, it, to, to have any teeth, it has to be in ordinance form. Um, uh, because we can't require people to do things necessarily that are not in ordinance. And so in planning and zoning, you're supposed to plan first, zone second. And so those kinds of ideas should, whatever those ideas would be, uh, should somehow make their way into the master plan first. And then the master plan allows us to base our zoning on something. The zoning, zoning enabled in that, total act one ten says all master, or all zoning is supposed to be based on a plan. That's all it says. Well, that plan is the master plan. And so if your zoning is based on a plan, which is the master plan, you're very defensible in court. If your zoning is not based on anything, then someone's gonna say your zoning is arbitrary and capricious and that it, that it's just, hey, the townships came up with something. They, they, they have no plan, they, they just came up with some standard that's not based on anything they've ever studied. And this is an arbitrary rule that they've come up with. But if you had studied, you know, it took us a year and a half to get our master plan done. So it's hard to say that anything that's in our master plan is arbitrary and capricious. I mean, we, we looked at it, studied it, looked at it again.
Multiple boards.
Yeah, so, um, I'm pretty comfortable with.
The board didn't.
Yeah.
The board didn't.
But multiple commissions.
The board, the board.
So it's, it's interesting about that whole dynamic because the master plan is our policy statement, our future direction. Um, and ultimately, in the board's wisdom, they decided to not make the final say on it. They left it with us after we voted. We learned that that's how it was gonna roll, um, which is okay, you know, better late than never. But in application of planning in the township or final says on public benefits or et cetera, I'm sure there are a few other items, we don't really have any say. Except for we can sit here and chat about what we think and vote about what we think and hopefully the board will look at what we think because we spend a lot of time chatting and thinking and poring through issues. Now, my, my sense is, is that I had always heard that, uh, when I first started, was that the board wanted us to pour through all these, they didn't want a bunch of unresolved issues to come to the board for final approval. That, so my sense is that the board really appreciates the work of the planning commission.
So, I agree.
So when the board approves something, they usually make a model motion. They don't say the whole thing out. They say, I, I, um, what is the term when they propose, I move the model motion. Is the model motion what we have already approved? Is that typically what they have in front of them?
It's, it's similar, I think it's similar.
So, so what we say goes in front of them unless they amend it, I think.
Yeah.
So.
So their model motion says it's previously discussed or is it previously approved by the planning commission?
It lists.
It could be something like, yes, we, yes.
Either or.
Yeah, we can, I can find out exactly.
Okay, I just wanna, uh, be mindful of, yeah, now, we, I, I'm, we all approved, thank you. Um, another, um, public comment. So we just wanna see if there's any que, uh, questions or whatever from our public and then we're done.
Thanks for chiming in.
This is great, I learned a lot, I have more questions.
Our esteemed leader got another public comment in here.
So we have, we have one hand up.
All right.
Amboid, I think this is the new hand up. But, uh, Ms. Boyd, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, a great session. I, I learned a lot and, uh, I, I really appreciate this. Um, I do have one question. So what are the policies or what does our township have to say about food trucks? Is, are there, can food trucks be anywhere in the township? I've not seen one before. I've not seen one before. That's, that's my question, thank you.
Yeah. Um, I have, so as only administrator, sometimes I have some, I have some latitude occasionally. Um, I have allowed, uh, uses like this. For example, in commercially zoned properties like Lowe's, they used to have a hot dog.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Cart or truck that would.
Menards.
Home Depot.
Menards.
And so they came to us and said, could, could we do a hot dog cart? It's properly zoned.
That's good.
My recollection is I allowed that to have. Now, that's kind of innocuous, it's a, it's a Menards or Home Depot, or not Home Depot, it used, used to be one of those. Um, we don't have, we don't have specific standards for food trucks. If we wanted, I've written specific standards for food trucks for another community. Um, we should probably have specific standards. Now, I will say, we have gotten almost, I've gotten almost no requests. So it's not something that's burning, you know, burning issue with the township. And if someone did want to have a food truck on a somewhat temporary basis, we probably could allow it, um, under our peddler's license. Like, right now, we allow the fireworks guys, um, and like the Christmas tree people at this point, uh, under the peddler's license, because there's provisions in the peddler's license that allows temporary uses. And so like when someone's selling fireworks, as long as they make setbacks, they're not property that's, you know, property that's properly zoned uh, for retail use. In this particular case, we're talking about Menards, they set up a tent every year. We've allowed that under the peddler's license. Um, however, if you wanted to get specific on food trucks, that would require a, an, an ordinance, new ordinance. So, long answer to your question.
I, I appreciate that. I, I was actually thinking of a food truck that would come in like once a week, so it would be temporary, not a, a permanent in release.
Yeah, we probably, we probably could allow that under the peddler's license.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, anyone else?
Yep, there's, uh, Mr. Rob Pattinson has his hand up. So, Mr. Pattinson, now you have the floor.
However, if it came from the planning commission, then it isn't being sponsored by anybody on the board, it's just coming before the whole board. That's what I'm asking about, Rob. And I'm not quite sure who writes it. Is it just the planning commission's writings?
Well, we, we provide a memo to the board and we usually put a little model motion at the bottom.
And it's repeats what the.
Basically repeats.
What the planning commission approved.
Not exactly, but it does repeat and then Will will take that and modify it.
Okay, so it does get modified.
So.
Well, we keep learning too, Rob.
So your memo to the board reiterates our motion?
Basically, yes, yes.
Except the stuff that's already been taken care of, the people.
Yeah, it's been taken care of. It's not just gonna be the exact repeat, but it's gonna be, it's gonna list the items that are still outstanding, if there are items that are still outstanding.
All right, I, what else?
There are no other hands up, but there are four people in the audience.
Oh, right. Yay, I'm glad people got to.
I'm willing to adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. This is supported by Commissioner Riser, so I, and Riser. Uh, any further discussion?
Do we have to close, well, discussion first?
Oh.
Motion to close, yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll amend that motion.
That's premature, sir.
We'll hold that motion. Okay.
Motion to close.
Close, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna, yeah.
Commissioner Moore and seconded by Commissioner Human. All those, oh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We're closing at nine thirty-five. And now we'll entertain the, uh, prior motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned at nine thirty-five.